Good morning. Got quiet all of a sudden, so it must be time to start. Anyway, thank you all for joining with us and we apologize for a little bit of a late start this morning, but we've got a full agenda and trying to make sure we've got anything organized. So we'll take a couple extra minutes before we start. So with that, again, welcome to everyone who's joined with us this morning and I know we'll have folks in and out of chambers during the course of the day. We have a full afternoon as well, but we're glad you're with us. And with that, I turned to our clerk and asked her to call the roll, establish a quorum, and make a couple of brief announcements, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance and dive right into the agenda.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 9th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Newton, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, undaunted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's go first to the items to be dropped or continued, and I will turn to board members. We've got speakers on. Looking at any of the consent items? No, not on the consent items, and so flow any items to be dropped or continued in the consent calendar?
Okay, so for today, for your consent matters, items 1 through 38. I do need a motion to drop item 22, proposed Fair Oaks Village Property and Business Improvement District. You were going to be adopting the resolution of intention to form the district. So moved.
Okay, moving second to drop item 22. I had no one sign to speak on that item. If nothing further than please vote.
Unanimous vote. Next, item 23, I need a motion to continue this to June 13th. The proposed Antelope Property and Business Improvement District was also a resolution of intention. So moved.
Second.
Okay, moving second to continue this to June 13th at any particular time?
No, this is a consent item.
Consent item. Now, are we going to take that calendar? That's our budget hearing day, is that right?
That is correct.
Yes, it is.
So just so people know, so the consent calendar will be taken up in the morning pre-budget, or is it going to be taken in the afternoon?
Actually, we're modifying that schedule, so right now, tentatively, the consent matters will be in the afternoon.
Okay, all right, thanks. All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then my final note is for item 25, I need a motion to continue to June 13th. The proposed Watt Avenue and El Camino Property and Business Improvement District. So moved.
Okay. Chair, with a second. Moving second to continue that likewise to June 13th. It looks like it'll be an afternoon session.
Correct, and it's a consent item.
All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and that concludes my notes.
Okay, let me turn to my colleagues here, and I know we've got some folks here for presentations, so we'll get to that in just a moment, but I'll turn to my left, Mr. Serna?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chair. Item 13, if the clerk would please read that.
Item 13, authorize the execution of a retroactive First Amendment to Personal Services Agreement with Blycy and Company Incorporated for Expanded Real Estate Appraisal Services and increased compensation required to complete an appraisal review report.
Thank you. I had a last minute question about the balance in the neighborhood revitalization fund. I received, we all received the answer, it's a million two, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm asking this of our CEO, whether or not you think it might be time for a overview of what's left in the fund and what it can be used for. For me, this is a reminder in the staff report that we have this available to do a number of, carry out a number of initiatives in our respective districts, and I, for one, wouldn't mind probably well after, well after budget, probably later this summer, to not necessarily have a workshop, but maybe an update from the CEO's office. And I don't know if there's any other interest shared in that regard by this board, by other board members, but again, I just want to keep our finger on the pulse of what resources we have available for quality of life initiatives in our districts.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, any other items, Ms. Serna? Kennedy?
Yes, thank you. I'd like the record to reflect, I'm recusing on number two, the potential conflict of interest, and then I just wanted to note that number 30 is the final plan out of the Sunrise Park District for Cabana Park in Foothill Farms, which is an old swimming pool that was abandoned, and now it's going to become a park with a lot of dog park in it.
Yeah, a lot of dog park, I saw that.
There were a lot of other things planned in it, and they all got booted out for dog parks, so there'll be a lot of dogs woofing over there, but it's right next to the freeway, so they can't be any louder. Anyway, I'm very proud of the district for getting that done.
Yeah, I did see that on the dog park, boy, there's the emphasis, I guess they had a couple of community meetings and, you know, take out the shelters, take out the playground, we want plenty of room for the dogs to roam, so, yeah, good, good work.
No gardens, no...
Just more room for the dogs to roam.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, Ms. Ross? Yes, okay. I did have just a couple of items, if I could, the question on item eight?
Item eight is a resolution of intention to lean delinquent storm drainage service charges for the City of Citrus Heights.
And I guess my question is actually a comment. When I see, we typically get a chart with these, Mr. Gill, that shows, you know, the annual, year-to-year kind of fluctuation in delinquent accounts and those that actually get resolved, and I don't know what magic Citrus Heights worked in 2016, but they got the delinquent accounts down to less than, it looks like about $5,000 bucks, $6,000, and it's kind of anomaly. I look at all our charts for water liens and garbage liens and even county stormwater, so I don't know what took place in the City of Citrus Heights that was such a positive, but they certainly got their delinquent accounts down to almost zero. So maybe we can have a discussion with the city manager, or, you know, I don't know what occurred there, but, or maybe Ms. Ross?
We have a previous city council member.
Maybe it's a new supervisor for a district that has something to do with it, I don't know, but anyway, just a positive note on that, so. And then if we could call item 17, I would like to offer a comment on that as well.
Item 17 is the amendment authority to increase the fiscal year 1617 pooled contracts with BHC Heritage Oaks Hospital, BHC Sierra Vista Hospital, and Sutter Valley Hospitals' Sutter Center for Psychiatry for $6,623,330 to provide inpatient psychiatric services.
I guess my first comment, this is a fairly regular item on the board agenda, and I know that we've had plenty of conversation about this, and certainly working with the hospitals, and I know some of my colleagues on this board have, over the past couple of years, in addition obviously to our staff, we've had discussions about strategies that we would employ and so forth. I would just say that I still find this concerning, that already mid-year, we added money on an order of magnitude, if I'm not mistaken, of, you know, four, five, maybe six million, now we're adding another five million. We've got some things in the works that will hopefully show some cost containment, but maybe some, you know, better triage for folks that are, you know, in distress that would, you know, fall under this category. But I guess my, part of the question I have as we enter budget next week, that we need to be realistic about the expectations, and when I see that we're going to, basically, we're now, this fiscal year, at 27,7 million, almost $28 million, and that we're going to budget for $15 million next year, I guess, and have twice this year, maybe even three occasions, at least twice this year, we've amended this on the order magnitude of almost $10 million, if memory serves me correct, maybe more than that. And so even with the things we have in the works to get, you know, some smaller facilities and do things with mobile crisis outreach, and again, I certainly commend the department and the community for their efforts and our mental health board for their support on this, is it realistic to think that we're going to build a budget around a $15 million allocation next year, even if some of those things come online? And so I kind of pose that question as we go into budget next week, because, again, we're hopeful, but we did that this past year, and I guess I'm not feeling that we're going to, even with the progress that's been made, and I think that that's anticipated, that we're going to get anywhere close to that number, so we ought to build a budget that realistically, I think, frames that, so. I don't know if you have any comments, or?
That's where next week we'll discuss it.
And I guess the other thing I would just say about this is that we've had ongoing discussions with the hospitals about this, and we've had some pretty spirited discussions from this dais with certainly members of the hospital, representatives from the hospital community, but also the medical providers, and certainly with our staff, and, you know, they continue to charge a rate, and you look at the beds, bed days, we're at, what, $23,000, you know, stays, it just, it continues to increase, and we're, you know, paying the tab for those folks, and so I think anything we can do that will help us, you know, contain the cost, but also provide for, you know, good outcomes and good care, it's in the best interest of certainly of everybody, both fiscally as well as treatment-wise, and so I don't know, are those discussions, you were involved, I know Supervisor Kennedy and others were a part of that, has there been any ongoing continuing dialogue with the providers?
We have not had a meeting in a couple of months, and one of the main reasons is that a lot of the work is backed by the county. We have a budget that you'll see that honors the commitment that we made for the last couple of years, until about $6 million. Second piece that we're working in is the siting of the facilities, and Mr. Lake and his group have been working with it. As need be, we'll pull the hospitals in when we need to have a further discussion. Siting is a key component right now that we're working on.
I guess I'm not so sure that getting, you know, 15 or 30 more beds, that somehow you're going to have a $10 million reversal on this, and so I guess that's why I call attention to the item, and again, this is realignment and general fund expenditures for, you know, psychiatric services under a broad umbrella of those things, and I guess I just, I raise the issue because I'm concerned that as we go into budget next week, you know, we'll be back, if we approve the $15 million figure, I trust we'll be back by February of 18, making another budget amendment as we've done in the last four years, I think, you know, we had five, it's not just a million, it's five or $6 million on that order, this year was 10 or $11 million, so. Anyway, Supervisor Kennedy?
Yeah, just to comment on some of that, keep in mind that it's more than 15 or 30, we're at least 45 beds short of where we thought we would be right now, and so if you do the multiplier of 900 plus a night, and these are short-term beds, so we're going to be rotating people in it, it's actually a significant amount of money, and it's number one. Number two is, we've identified, I really think that the, whatever we're calling it now, the full-service shelter is going to significantly help us with those navigation services, not to use the N-word, but, because we've already got the data that identifies the highest users of our, of our systems, particularly mental health. If you look at the top 250 users, it's at least, and this is not counting mental health services in the jail, it's at least $45,000 per person, per year. The higher you go, it's a curve like, if you isolate the top 75, which we've been talking about targeting through the full-service shelter, you're looking at as high as $150,000 per year, per person, that we're currently spending. So that's money that, once we can divert people into the right location, it will significantly decrease not only that number, but the number that we're spending on that $900 a night.
Thanks for that information. Okay, all right. The only other, then if there are no comments on that item, then, and thank you for that, Supervisor Kennedy, I'd just like to call item 31, I need to offer a comment, I'm going to ask if we hold that over for?
Item 31 is the resolution appointing director to Slough House Resource Conservation District.
Okay. Briefly on this, I've spoken with both the county executive and with county council in advance of this meeting, and I don't have any issue with the nomination that's been put forth. Obviously, this board, by virtue of the arrangement with the Resource Conservation Districts, makes the appointments to those boards with the appointing authority, and so I have no contest with the gentleman that's been nominated. But I did have the opportunity to be at the meeting a few weeks back where they were actually interviewing the candidates, and there was quite a bit of discussion by their board, certainly some prompted by audience input, including some of the prospective candidates to fill the vacant seat regarding the expansion of their board. Apparently, they have the authority to go from five to seven, and there was a good deal of discussion about that. They had four, you know, eligible and qualified candidates, as far as I could ascertain from the discussion that day. They obviously made a decision, the day I was there, they actually had postponed until they had one more director there. But the reason I put this out, that I know that there's been some concern expressed since that time by at least one of the parties who was, you know, a candidate for that particular position, but also by others that have been tracking the activities of the Resource Conservation District, and it's their strong belief that the board would be well-served, as would the public that in the area where the Slough House Resource Conservation District is active by having an expanded board. The other part of this that I would like to have a little more information on is that what they've chosen to do is to not expand the board, which obviously is their choice, as I understand it, if we're talking to council, but to have an associate director, there's some provisions under, I guess, either state or federal law that provides for that, but I'm not real familiar with all the details, and apparently they're actually having discussions, they're meeting this upcoming Friday about that, and I think it would be behoof this board and certainly the broader public, who I think certainly has seen a much more, a broader profile by this district in their activities with groundwater and so forth, which is a good thing, to at least have some understanding about what associate directorship means and, you know, why or why not as far as expanding the board, which is their choice. And I would note that there was, on the recommendation, we have a dissenting vote, and I don't think it pertained to the candidate as much as it did to the filling of the vacant seat and the addition of two seats, and so with that as a backdrop, I'd like to invite somebody from the district to be here to talk about their associate directorships and, you know, board expansion or not, and again, I don't want to hold this up indefinitely, and certainly they, you know, again, they have a qualified candidate, they had qualified candidates, so they had a pool to choose from, and I'd like to hold this over till next week, and I talked to you, Nav, about maybe logistically so that we didn't interfere with budget hearings, but I don't want to put this over till July, and I don't want to send a signal that I have a problem with the candidate, but I do want to have a discussion about their board.
Supervisor Natoli, if board so desires, we can hear this item on June 15th, we're meeting at 1:00 PM to select an assessor.
Okay.
And we can put this item after the selection of the assessor.
Okay, all right. So, and again, I would want to duly convey to the district that, you know, we invite them to be here to talk about, you know, board expansion potentially, but also the associate directorship, so we have some understanding about that, and I know there are some interested parties that may want to attend that as well, so. And so I would, as a part of this, I'd move that we'd hold this over till June 15th in the afternoon, probably what, 3 o'clock, 2:30?
I believe so. We have three candidates to interview.
All right, so I'm going to say probably 2:30 then, you know, at least. Okay. That would be my motion, to hold this over till June 15th at 2:30.
Second.
Okay, any other comments? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thanks. All right. I had no one sign up speaking on any other items on the consent calendar, so unless there's anyone wishing to address any item in the consent calendar, acknowledging the recusals and the actions already taken on the consent calendar, we have the balance of the consent calendar before us, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Moving second and then to approve the consent calendar, nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from item number two.
Okay, very good. All right, now we've got some presentations.
Okay. Your first presentation is a resolution recognizing World Refugee Day in Sacramento County, June 20th, 2017.
Okay, we have some folks who will join me at the podium, and then I'll get some presentations, and we got...
We've got several folks with us this morning, and I think that they each got a bit to add to the presentation, and I want to certainly thank my colleagues in their offices, I know there's this, the resolution was contributed to by all members of the board or their staffs, and so, again, we have a group here that will be introduced, and I think Diane Rosenblum will do the honors of speaking first and introducing her folks, and then we've got a presentation on behalf of the board, so with that, I'm going to turn to Diane.
Diane Rosenblum, I represent Amnesty International Sacramento Chapter, and I, special thanks to Supervisor Kennedy for sponsoring the resolution, and special thanks to all the rest of the supervisors for considering it. We appreciate how hard the supervisors work to enrich the lives of all the residents of Sacramento County. You know that immigrants bring fresh perspectives and new ideas and contribute to the diversity of our region in so many ways. Refugees in particular, because they've had to escape violence and cannot return home, are very motivated to build a positive and productive life here.
Continuing dialogue with the providers?
We have not had a meeting in a couple of months and one of the main reasons is that a lot of the work is back with the county. We have a budget that you'll see that honors the commitment that we made for the last couple of years on about $6 million. Second piece that we're working in is the siting of the facilities and Mr. Lake and his group have been working with it. As need be, we'll pull the hospitals in when we need to have a further discussion. Siting is a key component right now that we're working on.
I guess I'm not so sure that getting 15 or 30 more beds, that somehow you're going to have a $10 million reversal on this. And so I guess that's why I call attention to the item. And again, this is realignment and general fund expenditures for psychiatric services under a broad umbrella of those things. And I guess I just, I raise the issue because I'm concerned as we go into budget next week, we'll be back, if we approve the $15 million figure, I trust we'll be back by February of 18 and make another budget amendment as we've done in the last four years, I think. We had five, it's not just a million, it's five or $6 million on that order. This year was $10 or $11 million. So anyway, Supervisor Kennedy?
Yeah, just to comment on some of that, keep in mind that it's more than 15 or 30. We're at least 45 beds short of where we thought we would be right now. And so if you do the multiplier of 900 plus a night, and these are short-term beds, so we're going to be rotating people in it, it's actually a significant amount of money. That's number one. Number two is we've identified, I really think that the, whatever we're calling it now, the full-service shelter is going to significantly help us with those navigation services, not to use the N-word, but because we've already got the data that identifies the highest users of our systems, particularly mental health. If you look at the top 250 users, it's at least, and this is not counting mental health services in the jail, it's at least $45,000 per person, per year. The higher you go, it's a curve like, if you isolate the top 75, which we've been talking about targeting through the full-service shelter, you're looking at as high as $150,000 per year, per person, that we're currently spending. So that's money that, once we can divert people into the right location, it will significantly decrease not only that number, but the number that we're spending on that, $900 a night.
Thanks for that information. Okay. All right. The only other, then if there are no comments on that item, then, and thank you for that, Supervisor Kennedy, I'd just like to call item 31. I need to offer a comment. I'm going to ask if we hold that over for...
Item 31 is the resolution appointing Director to Slough House Resource Conservation District.
Okay. Briefly on this, I've spoken with both the County Executive and with County Council in advance of this meeting, and I don't have any issue with the nomination that's been put forth. Obviously, this board, by virtue of the arrangement with the Resource Conservation Districts, makes the appointments to those boards with the appointing authority. And so I have no contest with the gentleman that's been nominated. But I did have the opportunity to be at the meeting a few weeks back where they were actually interviewing the candidates, and there was quite a bit of discussion by their board, certainly some prompted by audience input, including some of the prospective candidates to fill the vacant seat regarding the expansion of their board. Apparently, they have the authority to go from five to seven, and there was a good deal of discussion about that. They had four eligible and qualified candidates, as far as I could ascertain from the discussion that day. They obviously made a decision, the day I was there, they actually had postponed until they had one more director there. But the reason I put this out, that I know that there's been some concern expressed since that time by at least one of the parties who was a candidate for that particular position, but also by others that have been tracking the activities of the Resource Conservation District. And it's their strong belief that the board would be well-served, as would the public that, in the area where the Slough House Resource Conservation District is active, by having an expanded board. The other part of this that I would like to have a little more information on is that what they've chosen to do is to not expand the board, which obviously is their choice, as I understand it, if I'm talking to council. But to have an associate director, there's some provisions under, I guess, either state or federal law that provides for that. But I'm not real familiar with all the details, and apparently they're actually having discussions. They're meeting this upcoming Friday about that. And I think it would be behoof this board, and certainly the broader public, who I think certainly has seen a much more, a broader profile by this district in their activities with groundwater and so forth, which is a good thing, to at least have some understanding about what associate directorship means and why or why not, as far as expanding the board, which is their choice. And I would note that there was, on the recommendation, we have a dissenting vote, and I don't think it pertained to the candidate as much as it did to the filling of the vacant seat and the addition of two seats. And so with that, as a backdrop, I'd like to invite somebody from the district to be here to talk about their associate directorships and board expansion or not. And again, I don't want to hold this up indefinitely, and certainly, again, they have a qualified candidate, they had qualified candidates that they had a pool to choose from. And I'd like to hold this over till next week, and I talked to you, Nav, about maybe logistically, so that we didn't interfere with budget hearings, but I don't want to put this over till July, and I don't want to send a signal that I have a problem with the candidate, but I do want to have a discussion about their board.
Supervisor Natalia, if board so desires, we can hear this item on June 15th. We're meeting at 1:00 PM to select an assessor.
Okay.
And we can put this item after the selection of the assessor.
Okay. All right. So, and again, I would want to duly convey to the district that we invite them to be here to talk about, you know, board expansion potentially, but also the associate directorship, so we have some understanding about that. And I know there are some interested parties that may want to attend that as well. So, and so I would, as a part of this, I'd move that we'd hold this over till June 15th in the afternoon, probably, what, 3 o'clock, 2:30?
I believe so. We have three candidates to interview.
All right. So let's say probably 2:30 then, at least. Okay. That would be my motion, to hold this over till June 15th at 2:30.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thanks. All right. No one signed up speaking on any other items on the consent calendar, so unless there's anyone wishing to address any item in the consent calendar, acknowledging the recusals and the actions already taken on the consent calendar, we have the balance of the consent calendar before us. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Moved seconded into approve the consent calendar. Nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from item number two.
Okay, very good. All right. Now we've got some presentations.
Okay. Your first presentation is a resolution recognizing World Refugee Day in Sacramento County, June 20th, 2017.
Okay. We have some folks who will join me at the podium, and then I'll get some presentations. We've got several folks with us this morning, and I think that they each got a bit to add to the presentation, and I want to certainly thank my colleagues in their offices. I know this, the resolution was contributed to by all members of the board or their staffs. And so, again, we have a group here that will be introduced, and I think Diane Rosenblum will do the honors of speaking first and introducing her folks, and then we've got a presentation on behalf of the board. So with that, I'm going to turn to Diane.
Diane Rosenblum, I represent Amnesty International Sacramento Chapter. And special thanks to Supervisor Kennedy for sponsoring the resolution, and special thanks to all the rest of the supervisors for considering it. We appreciate how hard the supervisors work to enrich the lives of all the residents of Sacramento County. You know that immigrants bring fresh perspectives and new ideas and contribute to the diversity of our region in so many ways. Refugees in particular, because they've had to escape violence and cannot return home, are very motivated to build a positive and productive life here. The Amnesty International Sacramento Chapter has actively encouraged this resolution to support refugees in Sacramento. We visited with all of you and your staffs in the past few months, and we found that you really did know a lot about the refugees who lived in Sacramento County. We believe, as a human rights organization, that all people deserve a safe place to live and a place to safely raise their family and work. We appreciate especially our five refugee organizations who are represented here today, who work tirelessly to welcome and settle those refugees, and they are indeed our newest residents. It's through their efforts that people can go from having the label of refugee attached to them, to just becoming a resident of the wonderful county of Sacramento. Please, I hope you will join me in lauding these organizations. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Hannah Messick. I am the Volunteer and Donations Coordinator representing the International Rescue Committee. As you know, we resettled over 1,500 refugees, nearly 1,500 refugees last year, and one of the things that I want to point out is, as these people are escaping war and violence, who we're resettling, 70% are women and children. At the IRC, we have women's and children's programs, and that, our role as resettlement agency looks like, and all of ours, looks like picking individuals up from the airport, enrolling their children in school, and economic empowerment programs. Just last year, 70% of the refugees who went through those programs in our office were fully financially self-sufficient within just six months of their plane arriving here in Sacramento. So we're very proud of that. I know that all of the agencies are working diligently in those ways. A majority of clients as well have a secondary degree, and so, as Diane mentioned, these are individuals who are ready and eager to support and contribute to Sacramento. I also want to thank you for the World Refugee Day resolution, as well as invite you to our World Refugee Day celebration on June 20th, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the New Roots Farm. It's in our neighbor West Sacramento there, but all five agencies will be present, and we'd love for you to join us in celebrating this as well. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Crystal Peak. I'm the Director of Operation for Opening Doors, which is one of the five Refugee Resettlement Agency in Sacramento. I want to extend our appreciation for the partnership we had with the county in the past six to a year, where we were able to partners with all the Department of Human Assistance Office to educate about the refugee resettlement process on our end, and also they educate us regarding the eligibility of those refugees for services. And we met last week on our quarterly meeting that we have with them, and I believe it was very successful, and I think all the agency can attest to that. We also have built good relationship and able to benefit those refugee families. As you already heard, Sacramento has a high level of arrival. Our agency also going to hit 1,000 for arrival this year, which is double our capacity from last year's, and everybody is going through that growth. We also would like to welcome the fact that our ability to discuss and be part of that process for the resolution today. And we also have been incredibly supported by the community in Sacramento. I think the Sacramento community has been very welcoming, and donation volunteers from this community have been increasing every year, based on the needs for those refugees. And finally, I want to thank Supervisor Peters that met with us last summer, as well as Supervisor Kennedy and Sonia, that made with the Refugee Resettlement Agency regarding the process, and we're looking forward to build a relationship with Supervisor Frost, and not only in the future. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Robin Simpson, and I'm with Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services. I'm our Director of Volunteer Services and Community Engagement. Our organization added refugee resettlement as one of our 15 programs and services about two years ago, so we're definitely one of the newer resettlement organizations in Sacramento. And I wanted to just take a moment to thank and give huge kudos to the other resettlement organizations in Sacramento, as we've settled into this new role, adding this as one of our services. We've just been absolutely impressed at how it's a united front, the organizations are extremely united, and have really welcomed us in as a resettlement organization and taught us the best practices, because we all have the same goal of really making Sacramento feel like home for all the refugees that we are all welcoming and resettling. No one has mentioned yet, so I wanted to, that Sacramento is the number-one destination in the country for Afghan SIV holders, Special Immigrant Visa holders, individuals that worked for the US government in Afghanistan. So these are, you know, often outstanding individuals that have given a lot to our country, and they're resettling here in Sacramento. So that's the majority of folks that are resettling in the Sacramento region. Sacramento Food Bank and Family Services is the smallest, I believe, resettlement organization. So far this year, we've just resettled 160 individuals, but that number is expected to go up. So there is a great need. We absolutely appreciate the support of the Board of Supervisors, so we just wanted to say thank you so much for considering the resolution.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dustin Cooper, and I'm the Refugee Reception and Placement Coordinator for Lau Family. As Robin stated, we are the newest agency. They are the second newest. I just want to thank all of the other RAs who have been able to support us thus far, as well as all of the Board of Supervisors for this resolution. It has been an honor and privilege to resettle our clients in this very welcoming county, and I have seen firsthand the welcoming culture of this county from the neighbors up to the representatives, and I know that our clients appreciate that, you know, in their transition. The best thing we can do is welcome them from, you know, the ground up. As the resolution states, Sacramento has a long history of both welcoming and benefiting from immigrant and refugee populations. This welcoming and accepting culture is a strength that embodies and ideals the values of America that are so necessary in this current time, where more individuals are displaced from their homes globally since World War II. Just want to thank everyone again for the opportunity to support this resolution, as well as invite you all, as we ask for the World Refugee Day at the IRC New Roots Garden, and hopefully get a chance to speak with you more on a one-on-one basis. Thank you all.
Good morning. It's good to be here this morning. Ten-year resident here in the county, last eight years in Antelope. And my name is Kurt Lewis. I serve as the Director of the Sacramento Field Office of World Relief. Since we opened in 1989, our staff, along with thousands of volunteers from churches in the community and the community at large, have had the honor of assisting over 30,000 refugees as they begin their new life here in the city, in Sacramento, the majority of them right here in the county. On behalf of our 40-plus staff and interns, and hundreds of current volunteers, and dozens of local church partners and other community partners, we want to express thanks to each of our county supervisors for what we hope will be your full support of this resolution. Acknowledging the significant legacy, and it is a legacy, as we were sharing before, we were talking about, you know, seldom do you recognize in the moment that you're in a historic moment, but we are in a historic moment, and we're building upon that legacy, a legacy of this county, both in terms of the warm and gracious hospitality of those who have received and supported our new refugees, as well as our refugees themselves, which have enriched our community and contributed by lending us their presence, their giftedness, their commitment to contribute to this county and this nation as a whole. In a time when the worst of human nature is being courted daily, daily through the propagation of baseless fears and stereotypes, we need clear voices sourced in knowledge and compassionate wisdom. In short, the best of human nature. In taking this action today, you have joined your voice with many others in this community and across this nation, who affirm a vision of a diverse people, a diverse people who are endowed by their Creator with dignity and freedom, and an opportunity to achieve our common hope of a place called home. With more and more of our elected leaders taking action like you are all hoping to, I'm hoping that you all do today, in resolution, it already happened. There we go. So, thank you. We hope that this collective voice that you have already lent today will grow to overcome those that promise security but only deliver a society marked by volatile loneliness. In a time of unprecedented human crisis, as was mentioned earlier, may the values of hospitality, diversity, hard work, may those values be what is ultimately remembered by our posterity here in Sacramento County. Thank you.
We certainly thank each of you, certainly for your comments and for the efforts that you personally, but certainly your organizations and those that assist you do, and certainly assisting folks who come to our community from faraway places, often in very stressful and terrible situations, and come certainly to this community for not only a better life, but for a safer situation for their families, and become a part of the fabric of this community. So we, again, thank you for your efforts. The resolution does recognize World Refugee Day in Sacramento County on June 20th, and certainly we've had the invitation extended by most of you to attend that, and the resolution, without repeating all the whereas's and some of the things that have been said here, does recognize those who have come and settled in Sacramento over the generations, the work and contributions that they certainly have made in a very positive way. We certainly continue to welcome them and offer our support, certainly for the efforts that are made by each of you and your organizations, but many others, to help them get settled here and become a part of the fabric of this community. So with that, the board unanimously approved the resolution. We have framed copies for each of you, and again, with a lot of goodwill and good wishes, we offer this to you today. So Diane? Yes, we need to vote.
Could we stand over here and get Sacramento County?
Yeah. Why don't we all go down? And let's all take a picture right there. I know before we call the next item, maybe board members want to make some comments, so...
So, thank you, Ms. Chair. First of all, I want to express my gratitude to all the organizations for their great work here in Sacramento County. I think, goes without saying, but I'll say it anyways, that I think we oftentimes take for granted what we have here in the United States. It's hard to fathom being forced from your home country due to war, conflict, and violence. It's not something that many of us here in the United States have encountered, and so it's that much more important that we have organizations like you, individuals doing the great work that you do. Remind us of that, and that's what this resolution is, for me, is really about today, is a very poignant reminder that this is a global responsibility that we here in Sacramento County, State of California, and the United States have a role to play in. So, thanks for that. I do have a question now. Unfortunately, I see that our Director of Internal Services is left. And the question I had for David was, looking at our public website or public portal for this hearing, I clicked on the item, and there's no material shown here. So I'm wondering why there's no, at least digital material?
Maybe because we were typing the last night, so...
Yeah, but there's also nothing in agenda to go, so...
It was just a late resolution.
I understand. But it would be nice if we can somehow maybe think about how to maybe change our protocol a bit on when things get submitted, so that the public does have an opportunity to read important resolutions like this, at least through electronic means here.
Make sure we get it loaded up.
Great, thank you.
I just want to thank all of you for the work that you do. It's unimaginable what some of these refugees have possibly gone through, and the courage that they had to, in their own country, help our country in some situations and put their lives of their families in danger. And it's, it's an honor and a privilege to have them here and to welcome them, and thank you for your work.
Thank you once again, and certainly we invite folks, want to give the particulars more time for the June 20th. What time is the...
It is World Refugee Day, celebrated by community members, as well as all five resettlement agencies will be there. It will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM on June 20th. That's a Tuesday. It is World Refugee Day, and the address for that is 491 Regatta Lane, I think, West Sacramento. You can also find more information at RSVPWRD.SplashThat.com. That's how you can RSVP. All the event details will be there. Refugee-owned restaurants, refugees, all the resettlement agencies and major supporters of this effort in Sacramento County will be present. So we hope to see you there and the public there as well.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the website just one more time?
Sure. RSVP, then the letters W-R-D dot Splash That dot com, or you can go to rescue.org backslash Sacramento, and there's information there.
Well, to Mr. Service's point, maybe what we can do is get that link put on the site today, so that way with the board action resolution, we can get that link each made, so people can find out about the event and not have to search too far to find it. So we'll do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all once again.
Okay, item 40 is the presentation of resolution congratulating Kathryn Shertliff upon the occasion of her retirement.
Robin D'Von, our County Counsel, is going to make some introductory comments, and then we'll invite, we'll tell things all the way up.
Good morning, board, audience. Kathy, I just wanted to say that one of the truly endearing things about the County Counsel's office is its ability to recruit and retrain just exemplary employees, and a poster child for that, recruited in her legal infancy and retained for 38 years, is Kathy Shertliff, who's retiring. She's retiring after a wonderful, long career that experienced a variety of both locations of County Counsel Office and many of the duties, primarily in juvenile dependency, for which we are very proud of her contribution. And reaching escape velocity is something to which we all aspire, and she and her husband are headed off to wonderful, good adventures, and as long as he can stay vertical and stay off the roof, we think they'll have many, many fine years doing those things. And with that, I want to hand it over to Don for our resolution. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Robin. You can sit. I am pleased, certainly, to be joined by Kathy, and I see Mike in the audience, and other colleagues from the office, and maybe other family members, to, as Robin said, to recognize someone who came to the county very, very, very early in their career, and actually made their career in serving the people of this county. And I think it really demonstrates certainly commitment on her part, and I think the ability to have worked through a number of different county councils, to have served under them, but obviously to have really focused in the area where helping families and children was her forte and something that she did very well, and I'm sure could recite many times, both the frustrations, but also the satisfaction of working in that regard, certainly within the juvenile dependency system and all the various facets that go with helping, hopefully, families heal and get better, but also to sort out situations that obviously are very difficult and sometimes probably overwhelming. But nonetheless, with the, I think, the intent of making a situation better for, certainly for the children that become involved in those situations, but obviously for family members who... members who come from a variety of backgrounds and a variety of circumstances. And throughout her professional career, as Robyn said, that she has made that her focus. You know, I noted in the resolution that we approved here this morning that it was, again, kind of on a humorous side, but that her office setting has varied over the years, including, I guess, working in the vacant space in the courthouse to an area that was actually, I guess, a modular unit out of juvenile hall.
Couple of those.
Couple of those.
Traders.
Traders, yeah. Traders, for lack of a better description. But certainly in recent years, once we moved over to the Granite Park facility, an opportunity to have a setting that obviously had kind of a full-service approach to, but one where her office space, I think, was befitting of her work and her efforts over the years. And again, I think, I made note of it already, but ensuring the safety and security and hopefully good outcomes for children and their family members has been the focus of the law that you've, and so dutifully carried out, but done an excellent job. And I know that as in retirement, that you and Mike are going to stay active in the community. You have a very strong family. I've had a chance to attend a couple of functions over the years that Kathy and certainly Mike and their family have been a part of. And that strong family bond certainly is a good footing, but also their work with the Conservancy, the Sacramento Valley Conservancy, and the Folsom Lake folks, the Adopted Trail. And I think this is an opportunity to maybe have, you know, the chance to sleep in once in a while, have a cup of coffee, and to do things that you want to do in a little more leisurely pace. And so with all that being said, on behalf of the people of this county, are grateful people, we want to offer our congratulations on a distinguished career of 38 years in service to the people of Sacramento County. Want to wish you well. Hopefully you have good health, much happiness, many blessings, and the blessings you've been to this county return to you in many fold, and we want to wish you well and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good. We'll get a picture in a minute.
Now, I'm quite notorious in my office for giving long-winded speeches at Service Award presentations, but I'll spare you that today. And I'm sure most of my colleagues are very happy with that. They tend to get the hook for me. But I do want to thank this Board for this resolution, and especially Supervisor Natoli, as he indicated. Supervisor Natoli has known a part of my husband's extended family since he was a child. And so it's very special to me to have Supervisor Natoli present this resolution. It's been an honor and a privilege to represent this Board and Children's Protective Services for all these many, many years. As indicated, I did start early on in my career. I was an intern in my second year of law school at, with CPS, with their system at that time. And it's, I'm very proud of the fact that I, in my understanding and belief, that I have the longest legal career in juvenile dependency in the state. And that's something I'm very proud of. It was very exciting to be on the ground floor when having legal representation in juvenile dependency cases was just starting to be the norm. Prior to that, there would be, sometimes there'd be, a county council would come out for a case, and sometimes they wouldn't. It would just be whether or not the department thought that they needed them. But of course, everyone at this point in time is lawyered up, and everyone has an opportunity to represent them, each parent and each child, as well as the department. And it's also been, I've also had the pleasure of working alongside and teaming with very many, very dedicated and hardworking social workers. And they are the core of this system. And they oftentimes don't get, they're just do. And they are hardworking, dedicated, and have the children's best interests in mind. And it is through them that we are able to do the work that we do. And of course, I'm indebted to the clerks, the office managers, and especially the secretaries who have supported me along the way. And lastly, there are my fellow deputies, who I will miss dearly, miss talking and interacting with them on a daily basis and mostly commiserating with them. These are, this is a difficult job. It can be a very intense job. And it's nice to have your fellow employees or fellow deputies to talk to about these situations. Then that's going to be one of the hardest things to walk away from, is the fellowship and camaraderie with this basically legal mass unit that we called juvenile dependency. And again, thank you. It's been a ride, a glorious ride through humanity, the good and the bad. And I hope that I have done some good for the children of Sacramento County. I know that we, the deputies, the social workers, and the support staff have done a good job for the children of Sacramento County. And I appreciate all the support, and I appreciate the resolution, and appreciate having this career for this long of a time. Thank you.
We want to have my family and colleagues to join you. Mike, want to come down and join the picture?
He needs to take a picture.
Come on.
Mike, come on down. Yes.
Staff, serving.
There we go.
Good. Thanks, Kate.
Your next item for item 41 is the invitation to the Board of Supervisors to attend the 2017 California State Fair.
Good morning. Good morning. Rick Pickering, CEO of Your California State Fair and Exposition. Honorable Chair Natoli, distinguished supervisors, CEO Gil, and talented executive leadership of the county in Sacramento. Thank you for your ongoing dedicated service, not only to the people of this great county, this city, but this entire region, and being a leader in the state of California. Along with you as the Board of Supervisors, we at Cal Expo strive to help build stronger communities. In noting items on your agenda today, I was asked to point out a few things that we do for the community as a whole, in addition to the things that we do as the state fair. So just a very short list. We were recently activated as a regional shelter for feeding operations and sheltering operations, as well as assisting with animal rescues during the Oroville Dam incident. We conduct the largest single blood drive in Northern California in concert with UniVision as well as BloodSource. We recently conducted, more than 2,000 people participated in a free dental clinic at Cal Expo property. Our California State Fair farm is now providing farm tours to thousands of elementary school children, where they're learning about seeds, soil, farming, how to wash vegetables and produce. And again, we want to thank Supervisor Kennedy for his personal support of the farm tour program. And we were able to glean and donate to the various food banks almost seven tons of food from our five-acre farm just this last year alone. In concert with the Salvation Army, we work together to provide food and clothing and gifts during the holiday season to more than 2,000 families this last holiday period. We're also proud to continue to be the home of Your Sacramento County Fair, which had a great run last weekend. Fantastic job. And we continue to help celebrate a number of cultural legacies, cultural festivals, Hawaiian festivals, the Monk Festival, Chinese Lantern Festival, Latino festivals. And this year, our website went primetime, and we now have nine separate languages that you can view our website in, and we're continuing to expand that outreach as well. We also, as you're well aware, are one of the largest owners of American River Parkway land of over 400 acres. You may or may not be aware, we're also the national pharmaceutical stockpile for Northern California. So should the zombie apocalypse reach us, we are in fact designated as the Northern California Pharmaceutical Stockpile for the federal government, and we're also designated as an alternative fallback seat of government for the state of California. So just a few of the small things that we do along with you to constantly help build a stronger local community. Your California State Fair has been a one constant setting for celebration and showcasing the best of California for more than 164 years. And roughly 162 of those years have been right here in Sacramento County. 2017 is very unique in that it represents the 50th anniversary of the state fair's move to the new fairgrounds known as Cal Expo. So that celebration actually began back in 1962 under Governor Pat, then Governor Pat Brown instituted a Senate resolution to acquire the property, and he put together a blue-ribbon design team, which included Walt Disney himself, as well as executive members of the Disney Design Team. So our 50th anniversary poster, which each of you have a copy of today, it's available on our website as well, is a celebration of the rich heritage of California, and it's also showing movement in a forward direction. So you'll see the tie of the monorail, which the Disney designers encouraged us to do. And then at the bottom of the poster, you'll see the iconic California letters, which we're very honored to receive from Disney and place at the front of Your California State Fair. You also have a recycling bag that says California State Bag for when you go shopping. You can take that with you. Also in that bag, there's a number of other items. There's California fruits, the map of California, there's olive oil, which we took out of your bag. We'll have some California award-winning wine delivered to you at a different point in time. The concert lineup, as well as other pieces of memorabilia. One that's very exciting to us is the magazine, which you each have a copy of. This was last year's award winners. This year's award winners will be published in about two weeks. But this magazine, along with our website, identifies the finest wines in California, the award-winning craft beers. I love the rainbow sunglasses. Thank you, Supervisor, for being a model.
I can barely see you. They're very dark, so they work.
Actually, I probably look better through really dark sunglasses, far, far away. But award-winning cheeses, award-winning olive oils. You also have our concert lineup in front of you as well. This year.
Okay, boys, down there. Come on, you've got three with the rainbow glasses on here.
I think this is worth a photo for social media.
And I can't see at all, Rick, because I don't have my glasses on, so.
Glasses were a huge hit at Saturday, last Saturday's Pride Parade, so thank you for supporting the Pride activities as well. July 14th through 30th this summer, we'll be celebrating, we're doing a special celebration and recognition of the rich contributions farmworkers have made historically to the state of California agriculture industry. The agriculture industry in California today is more than $47 billion strong. We'll also be showcasing and recognizing Cesar Chavez as a state holiday, but also his contributions in starting farmworkers, being there at the beginning of the farmworkers' labor movements in California. We have a time capsule. It's our 50th anniversary, so people can submit information, be part of the time capsule. We're working with FFA in South County to actually help weld together the steel time capsule box that'll be placed on storage with the state archives. We're doing a salute to dinosaurs, and you think, ah, why is California thinking about dinosaurs? Well, actually, the Brea Tar Pits, important part of California, is the third-largest tar pits in the world. So look forward to that. And our equestrian programs this year will be doing a salute to Hollywood. And you think, well, okay, Hollywood's California. The moving picture industry has its roots to some guy named Stanford, who made a bet, could all, does all four horses leave the ground at the same time or not? And you know the answer?
Yes, I do.
At one point in time, all four feet leave the ground. But he actually hired a gentleman who set up tripwire, so as the horse ran by, tripped the wire, the camera exposed, they then took all those pictures, laid them side by side, then put them together in a pile, and flipped through them, and it became a moving picture or a motion picture. So horse racing in California, Stanford in California, movie industry California.
And that was in the late 1800s.
Yes, ma'am. So tying that all together in our equestrian programs will be exciting for it. Supervisor Serna, we're pleased to announce, in a partnership with SMUD, we'll be installing 14 electric vehicle charging stations. The uniqueness is the charging stations will actually be located underneath the solar panels. So you'll have sun on top of the solar panels, and you'll be charging your car beneath the solar panels, shaded parking. We're also promoting a very active Bike to Your State Fair program with a bike valid program on weekends, as well as meetup groups meeting throughout the region to ride their bikes to their state fair. We've been able to add a third community stage. We're increasing the number of community acts performing this year. We're even inviting you out to enjoy a very popular local band, Unsupervised. If you'd like to come out and cheer on one of your own.
Got to wear sunglasses.
There you go. Sunglasses and a sing-along, I think, would also be important. You have a listing in your packet here of the 17 free concerts, they're free with admission, but acts like Melissa Etheridge, Trace Atkins, Ozo Motley, Smash Mouth, who many of you may remember from the Shrek movies, Belinda Carlisle, because some of us were alive in the 80s, Sheila E., Blues Travelers, it's a great time would be had by all Sacre Public will be playing a league game and possibly.
Don't forget the Marshall Tucker Band now.
And the Marshall Tucker. We can go through the whole list, but I've looked at your agenda, it's quite long today. Sacre Public continues to grow, they have their new leadership involved or their new ownership involved, but we're excited about the things they're doing on the field. And then several of you came out and toured Cal Expo a couple of months ago during the holidays with us, and we pointed out that we have signed a franchise agreement with Rockin' Brew's Family Entertainment Restaurant, which will be located at the corner of Expo, Arden, and Ethan, and it will go hand in hand with the synergy of the Century Theater complex there, the new restaurants, Nordstrom's racks, Home Goods, et cetera. So we're looking forward to that. We also want to thank the county. Thank you, as the Board of Supervisors, for continuing to support the community fireworks celebration on the Fourth of July. Between us, the state, the city of Sacramento, and certainly the county of Sacramento, have about 20,000 people that we know of that enjoy those fireworks shows in that local area. And so thank you for your contribution. For the folks listening, the doors open at 5:00 on the Fourth of July for folks coming out to actually be on the property. We know a lot of people surround the property and watch the show as well. We did something new this last year, we're continuing it this year, we're calling it the Blue Ribbon Brunch on Sunday, September 10th. So it's after the fair closes, but it's part of the Farm to Fork calendar that'll be coming out from Visit Sacramento. So Blue Ribbon Brunch on Sunday, September 10th. Members of the public can purchase a ticket, you can come out, and you'll be served the best wine, the best olive oil, the best craft beers, the best cheeses, some of the best recipes. Last year, we had Best Brownies and Best Cookies recipe. It was amazing. We also had sponge cake, and then it rained on us, so you should appreciate the irony of sponge cake and rain. But this is open to the public, and it ends the big celebration of Farm to Fork at the end of the month there. We have the state fair gala coming up, June 22nd, which we recognize the Agriculture of the Year, the Vineyard of the Year, Technology Champions of the Year awards, a number of awards, which are certainly, we encourage you to come out and enjoy helping us recognize the best of the best. So we want to thank you for all that you do for Cal Expo. We're a very large state-owned facility that receives no funding. Our infrastructure is 50 years old now, so it's actually catching up to me at some point in time. So we're always looking for funding. We're not asked here today to ask you for funding, but we appreciate all the cheerleading you do for Your California State Fair, the Cal Expo facilities, and the strong partnership that we have with you and your staff. And actually, I withheld this bag because Gil, Mr. Gil, CEO Gil, has done a great job of supporting us through the years, so we also have a bag for him.
Good, thanks, Rick.
This makes you the bag man.
Unless you have questions or comments for us, we have our Chief of Staff, Tom Martinez, is with us. More our Director of Marketing. Your California State Fair, for the second year in a row, won the number-one marketing award in the world for fairs and festivals. It was unheard of when we won it the first time two years ago, and to win it two years in a row with the Blue Ribbon Campaign, we're sticking with the Blue Ribbon Campaign. It's pretty good stuff.
You bet. All right, Rick, well, thanks for being with us, and we got some comments here, so we'll stand by. So Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna?
Yeah, just real quickly, Rick, you know, this is a lot of 50s this coming year. We've got the fair, we've got the airport, and a couple of supervisors.
Thank you for reminding me.
I just want to say that, as you know, I kind of grew up at the fair through my grandfather and learned to drive on the fairgrounds, you know, learn to ride my horse on the fairgrounds, and goes on and on and on. So I got my first job at the fairgrounds. And so I've. And so I've seen a lot of general managers and a lot of leadership come and go, and there's been none that have been as good as you.
Thank you.
And your recognition of the multiculturalism of California and our region in particular, and just all the great amenities that you've brought, and taking really a challenging 50-year-old infrastructure and doing the best you can, but making it better. So I want to thank you for your leadership and that of your team.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So I'd certainly like to echo my colleagues' comments. I think we've been duly impressed each year, Rick, that you come, not just when you come here to explain the theme and underscore all the great agricultural products that are associated with the fair, but, you know, as consumers of, and folks that up here that enjoy attending the fair with our families and really seeing for ourselves how sustainable the fair has become, as you mentioned, rightfully so, that you're not general-funded, so you are an enterprise fund of the state, and so you have to operate like a business. And that means being very careful about your spending and being very thoughtful about your revenue generation, and to see it grow, to see the fair's success continue to grow the way it has over the last several years is very impressive to us, and I think to the entire community. So please keep up the great work, and Unsupervised looks forward to playing again.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Rick, I would just extend thanks certainly on behalf of the broader community for all the efforts, because obviously you're much more than just a state fair. You're certainly award-winning, many rights, you're recognized for your marketing campaign internationally, but I think the list that you went through, which I'm sure was a short list of your engagement, and, you know, I think the ability to pull from different geographical regions of the state, but certainly to highlight what's best about the people and the geography and all the things that we, you know, really hold dear as a state, but interjecting fun, and I think, you know, learning and all of that is, as well as giving back to the community in so many ways, really is an important aspect that we shouldn't forget, because again, it's not just the two-week run, it's, you know, all year long that you're doing this, and I just want to, again, offer my congratulations, that's been added already for your leadership, that of your team, obviously, and all the folks who work year-round to make the fair a great event, but also then to give back in so many ways. So thanks for being here today, thanks for the goodies, and we look forward to a great run. Hopefully, the weather will be very cooperative and, you know, have, you know, just the right kind of summer atmosphere to enjoy all the activities from dusk till dawn, so.
It's Sacramento in July, we love it. Thank you, not only for your support, but your cheerleading means an awful lot to your state fair, being the home county of the state fair. Actually, the state's constitution was amended to require the state fair to stay in this county, to stay in this capital city, and that was done because of the support the county and the city were showing us. So thank you for all that you do. The sunglasses look spectacular. I can see them out on social media now. So be cool and come to your state fair this summer, July 14th through 30th.
I see a couple of backup members, Unsupervised, over here.
Well, that could happen, they could be-
Cool in the game, there you go, all right.
If only we could dance.
Good. Thanks a lot, we appreciate it. Okay. Again, with thanks to Rick and his team and being here this morning. And with that, and that concludes the presentations, and now we get into some of the hearing items.
Item 42, authorizing execution of a sales and purchase agreement, certificates of acceptance for the grant deed and the easement for ingress and egress and public utility, and agreement for right of first offer and a memorandum of understanding between Farm to Future Associates LP and the county of Sacramento for the purchase of approximately 12.64 acres of vacant land located in the unincorporated Old Florintown area of Sacramento. The environmental document is a notice of exemption.
Okay, Ms. Bohuili.
Good morning, Chair Nantoli, Supervisors Chris Bohuili with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. The item before you for consideration continues efforts to develop an innovative affordable housing urban working farm community in the Old Florintown neighborhood. In March 2016, the Board adopted a resolution allocating 1 million of 2014 Housing Related Park Program funds, HRPP grant funds, from the state to partner with Farm to Future Associates LP and their parent company, Domus Development LLC, to build approximately 200 affordable housing units, along with a public park and urban working farm, which would provide job opportunities to, for the housing residents. Since then, county staff representing multiple departments have worked with Southgate Recreation and Park District and Mia Kong, the owner of Farm to Future Associates, to develop the deal structure presented in your board package. It is relevant to note that Ms. Kong, formerly with Domus Development, is now with the related companies of California, and she has formed Mia Kong LLC, which has assumed ownership of Farm to Future Associates. The action before you this morning authorizes the county executive and director of general services to execute various documents, which will allow the county to purchase two parcels totaling 12.64 acres from Farm to Future Associates. These two parcels are envisioned to be the public park and farm sites. The documents attached to your board package include a sales and purchase agreement, an agreement for first right, or for right of first offer, and a memorandum of understanding, and an easement for ingress and egress. The highlights of the arrangement are that the county will purchase the two parcels for the appraised value of $650,000. The right of first offer grants the county the right to purchase the affordable housing sites in the event Farm to Future fails to develop an affordable project and chooses to sell the property. The MOU was prepared to outline the county and Farm to Future's commitment to meet regularly, secure competitive funding for the park, farm, and housing developments, and reiterate the county's right of first offer. It is important to note that through a subsequent action, likely in the early fall, the county's, county staff will ask the board to consider conveying the two parcels, along with the residual state funds, to Southgate Recreation and Parks District. That concludes my remarks. I'm available for any questions, and I'd also like to acknowledge that Mia Kong, owner of Farm to Future Associates, is here, as well as Ward Winchell from Southgate Recreation and Park District. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. I see Supervisor Serna has wishes to speak, maybe others as well, so if you'll stand by.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So first of all, thank you, Chris, for all your hard work that you've put into this project. And I know it has evolved, it continues to evolve. You know, it's a complicated one, it has a lot of moving parts in terms of the parks component, the affordability component, and I am very supportive of it. I do have some questions, and I know this is a long-term project. I guess the first question is, is how do you, I mean, we've had a lot of discussion at this board in the last year and a half about affordable housing, how do we increase our inventory countywide? How do we maybe shift some SHRA resources so that we begin to prioritize some of the housing resources for formerly chronically homeless individuals and families? This conversation about this project started with a very novel concept that part of the property would be dedicated for an urban farm, the housing component could function to accommodate formerly homeless individuals. So that's what initially, you know, caught my attention, is that we're celebrating our legacy here in Sacramento County in terms of our agricultural history, but at the same time, we're also responding, I think, very affirmatively to the need for more affordable housing. So how do you, how do you see the project as it currently is being proposed satisfying, especially that intent for us to expand our inventory for deep-targeted affordability?
I think that's a great question. The housing site itself is included in our, in our housing element as a affordable housing site, so we are counting it, counting on it as being an affordable housing site, and there are requirements that it be developed there. However, as you mentioned, the sort of working understanding that we've been under in working with the developer has been that we're really looking for a deeper target for affordability. And I think as we move forward with trying to secure competitive funding for the site and looking at different housing resources that might be available, we're going to continue to try to structure a project that meets, that meets the goal of having a deep target for the project. We can also have the developer speak to her thoughts as trying to secure those funding resources to do that deep level of targeting.
I'd like to hear from Mia here in a moment. What about, what about the Housing Authority's involvement? Is they're going to, is this currently structured so that it does welcome that and, you know, maybe some new creative ways? That seems to be, again, a theme that this board is interested in, given our recent public discussions on the subject.
Absolutely. It certainly, they need to be part of the discussion. There's been some preliminary discussions with them as part of the, as part of structuring this, this, this package that's in front of you. But as you may note in the MOU, we're committing to regular meetings with the developer with Southgate, and we would include the Housing Authority in those discussions as well.
Okay.
Could I just add to that, just that point? I mean, even the premise going back a number of years ago for the study that was done in Old Town Florin that laid the groundwork for opportunities for housing, for, you know, reinvestment for businesses and so forth, the SHRA was, in the time you were there, I don't know if you worked on this project, but they were very much a part of it and have been a part of it, obviously with the, now we're talking specifically relative to the housing, but, you know, I wouldn't want to lose sight of that either, Chris. I don't know, you didn't mention that, but, I mean, they laid the groundwork, the planning effort, I think SHRA, along with County Plan Department, but, you know, paid for some of the studies that actually, you know, kind of set the stage, and certainly have been a big contributor through block grant monies and also in partnership with some of the grant applications that have been made, both through DOT and through SECOG, that have brought money into Old Florintown for infrastructure improvements, as well as, you know, and obviously Supervisor Serna and Kennedy represent those areas now. But nonetheless, I mean, they have historically a strong presence of support and engagement, so kind of, as I said, we're going to involve them in the meetings, it would seem to me they would be a part of the ground floor to Supervisor Serna's question of the discussions about how to move forward in, you know, and secure the financing that's going to be necessary to do the project, so.
That's absolutely true.
Okay. All right, Phil.
I'd like to hear from the developer.
Mia Kong with Mia Kong LLC, we're the owner of Farm to Future Associates. This project has been around for over two years, as far as its concept, there's been a lot of investment in the property. I know that there has been a long planning effort in Old Florintown for new housing in this area. I think it's an area for growth and an opportunity that is a priority area under SECOG's blueprint also, as far as opportunity areas, and transit also has an opportunity to improve there. And of course, the county's already invested infrastructure dollars in improvements on floor and road, and new sidewalks and improvements. So it seems like a great opportunity to sort of launch off of all of the previous efforts. As far as housing funding, you know, we all know it's very challenging. We have no redevelopment, and we have whatever efforts are underway right now with the governor and the legislature in terms of additional affordable housing funds. I believe that there will be some support in the legislature this year for new additional funding, but we do have at our disposal now the beginning of the No Place Like Home funding. And that, as everyone knows, is very well-targeted for the type of supportive housing we are looking forward to deliver on this site. And so I think in collaboration with the county, I know the county's been very active, we've spoken with Sidney Kavanaugh, who's working under your programs now to sort of develop, I think, the county's program, I think frankly, this project can help define, I think, a new model for supportive housing for the county, I think a new model that hopefully we can be creative and flexible about and work together to arrive at that. I think now with your action today, we can solidly move forward on a plan that brings a collaboration effort together, both with the county, I think, your various resources within the county, as well as transit, and a conversation with RT, that's another piece of this. And so the goal is to try to build a cap-and-trade project out here. It does score well from a scoring standpoint, it's what's considered a disadvantaged community and still stands that way, which will help its rankings, and I think with the collaboration, and the fact that the project is already entitled. So it has the entitlements, we won those last year with a design review, so it's been approved for the housing that's been shown, and with community services and lots of open space, and the idea too is that it's a place that's pet-friendly.
Great, thank you. So I appreciate that summary, and let me, let me connect some dots that may be obvious to some, maybe not so much to others. So you have a very supportive supervisor here, in whose district the project lies. Now it's across the street from Supervisor Kennedy's district on the south side of Florin. But also with Supervisor Kennedy, you have someone that has been appointed to the No Place Like Home Advisory Board. And then thirdly, I believe since the last time you and I and my staff went down the path of trying to have a discussion with RT about how they play a very prominent role in terms of perhaps reconfiguring the location of various bus stops, that was with a previous administrator. And so I don't know, Mia, whether or not you've had an opportunity to speak yet to Henry Lee, who I think has been at RT, what, a little over a year now? So with, just with those three things, and then don't forget too, you also have a member of the Air Resources Board here, and you mentioned cap-and-trade, so this is, you've got a lot of support and I think interest from a lot of different decision-makers. And so I think, you know, to grab the next gear on this thing, what I'd like to suggest we do is maybe, and if Supervisor Kennedy, who's also on the RT Board, is interested in doing so, we sit down with Henry Lee to figure out that, that part of it, and then at some point, I'd like to also have you join me in a meeting with some of our executive team at the Air Resources Board.
Okay. I look forward to next steps. I think this is very exciting, it's a wonderful step today. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions, other members of the board? I just, I had one question relative to the support for project. Have we looked into the idea of sewer credits? Since we have, we're sparsely sewered in that part of the world there, it was never included as a part of the regional formation, our sanitation district, so is that part of the package that we're looking at?
We have not yet looked at that, but that is something, as we look to try to structure financing for the project, we'll be looking at all available incentives, including those.
Because there's some, there's some clocks ticking relative to utilizing those, as we're well aware, for some of those sewer credits, and so I do think that, you know, that this would be, you know, in that part of the world, an important consideration. I don't know what it would mean to overall project cost, but I gotta imagine it would help some, so.
Okay.
All right. I don't have anybody else, or anybody signed up to speak on this, so unless there's any other comments, Supervisor Serna?
Move the item.
Just a second. To approve the staff recommendation as outlined, and thanks, folks, for being here. I did, should I ask Ward, is there anything you wanted to add on behalf of Southgate?
Oh, thank you, sir.
Okay, all right, very good. So with that, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Okay, thank you all, and we'll look forward to hearing some more good progress on this particular project, so. All right, next item, please.
Item 43, authorize an agreement with Cal-Win Client Correspondence Printing and Mailing Services to BIT California LLC, doing business as document fulfillment services for the amount of $9,440,694.
Okay. Good morning, Ann. We do have some speakers signed up on this, and so I know that Ann's been at this podium before on this item, and we have a related item on the agenda as well that you'll probably touch on. I think item 66 is a receive and file, but it relates certainly to some-
I will be addressing that as well.
Okay, all right, very good.
So, good morning, Ann Edwards, Department of Human Assistance, and I'm here as follow-up to our December 13th hearing regarding the printing contract with DFS and the findings of the Department of Finance agreed upon procedures. of Finance agreed upon procedures. In December, you approved a contract extension to allow time for the Department of Finance to complete their agreed upon procedures using source file data from Cal-Win to verify print images, which are the largest portion of this contract. Since then, the Department of Finance has completed their review, and you have a copy of their report, as well as the responses from DHA. In December, there were some allegations that DFS was fraudulently billing Sacramento County as well as the other counties in the consortium. The Department of Finance did find some disallowed and questioned costs, as well as some underbilling, but there was no evidence of fraud. Using the source file data from Cal-Win, the Department of Finance found no discrepancy on print images. This is significant as this is the largest portion of the contract. The Department of Finance did find some overbilling regarding the TDD endorsements totaling a little over $124,000. Once this problem was identified, it was immediately corrected, and there were no additional TDD charges after July 30 of 2016. The Department of Finance also found some overbilling relating to postage totaling $14,457, extrapolated over the life of the contract totals three hundred, little over $312,000 due to incorrect postage rates being applied on 14 invoices. It is important to note that the accurate postage rates have been applied for the last two years of the contract. Unfortunately, DHA has to take some responsibility for failing to validate the postage rates on invoices, and we are now doing a thorough review of all invoices. In addition to the disallowed costs I just spoke of, there were some questioned costs related to postage, a folding charge, and other services not identified in the contract. The costs are questioned by the Department of Finance as they were services provided and paid for, but not outlined in the contract. This is, again, at least partially, the responsibility of DHA for not amending the contract or having contract language that is broad enough to account for these often legally required services. One example of the legally required services is our requirement to include voter registration materials in mailings to our customers. This was not included in the contract, but we are required by law to include them. We asked DFS to provide the service. They provided the service. They billed us for the service, and we paid them for a legitimate service provided. All areas of contract, out of compliance in the contract, DHA was either aware of or we specifically requested the services. Finally, the Department of Finance found that DFS undercharged DHA for our notice of language services. This is a two-sided document included in all of our notices of actions. DFS failed to charge us the two-sided rates, only charging us for a single image totaling an undercharge of over $595,000. When you net out the overcharge and undercharge, the county owes DFS approximately $144,000. Finally, the department is recommending we proceed with the original contract award for DFS for five years. DFS had the highest score of the bids received, has provided DHA with excellent customer service, and continues best practices to maximize efficiencies. DHA has taken proactive steps to ensure increased clarity and compliance with the contract and looks forward to applying the Department of Finance's recommendations in improving contractual language, monitoring, and compliance to ensure resolution of all issues. We have already amended the current contract to address the postage issues and the duplex printing issues, and we are validating all invoices. And all of the Department of Finance findings will be specifically addressed in the new contract. So that concludes my remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know I will stand by as other people talk, and we have staff here from my department, from DTEC, and from the Department of Finance.
Okay, thanks, Ann. I do have a couple of things to follow on to your presentation. Could you maybe walk through again how you went from underbilled, overbilled, disallowed to the county owing to, basically calculating the county owes DFS $140,000? If you could just kind of, you know, structure that and do it in a little more detailed fashion. I know it's in the audits and the staff report, but I think for, in benefit of this board, but I think for clear understanding, particularly in light of some of the questions that were raised back in December hearing, the ongoing review, and I think some of the findings that were made in both the auditor's report, but also by DHA in making the recommendation, if you could just step through that again.
So, I'll do my very best, and if you have more specific questions, the audit staffer here that could help as well. So, we took the findings from the first agreed upon procedures and then all of the allegations that were presented to us and used that as the starting point for identifying what things the Department of Finance was going to look at in their next review. And that included the print images, the TDD, the postage, and I might be forgetting one other thing.
Yeah.
Oh, and then the notice of language inserts, that came to our attention, which wasn't looked at the first time around. So, there was some overcharging on postage rates when you, we were able to compare invoices to source documents, and we did find there was some overbilling of postage on an invoice. And then what the auditors do is they extrapolate that over the life of the contract, which is why a $14,000 disallowed cost came to a $312,000 disallowed cost.
Okay.
On the TDD, that was a fixed amount. There's no extrapolation on that because it was a fixed time, and we were able to validate 100% of the invoices that had TDD on them, and that's where we came up with the $124,000 figure. That is not extrapolated because it was for a finite period of time. The question costs, which we actually didn't even include in the net out, are the costs for services that DHA specifically asked DFS to provide, but they weren't noted in the contract. So it's an auditor's responsibility to identify that as a question cost because it wasn't in the contract, but I think it would be a bit unfair to not pay them for services that we specifically asked them to provide, and they provided for us. The notice of language insert, we're required to submit that with every notice of action, which is a letter to a client saying that they're not eligible for service. We have to include that two-sided document, and they picked it up as a one-sided document, billed us for a one-sided document over the life of the contract, and it is in fact a two-sided contract. And so if, excuse me, a two-sided document, so if in fact they had charged us for that, it totaled $595,000. So when you take the disallowed costs and the underbilling and net it out, that's how you get to the $144,000.
Okay. And just as you touched on, so the blank page is considered a two-sided document? Is that what you just said?
Yes. So, we amended the contract to account for the blank page issue. So when we asked them to print in duplex, because so many of our documents are two-sided, and even if you have multiple single-sided documents, it's easy, it's more cost-effective to print in duplex. So there are blank pages in there as well because of the fact that we do duplex printing and not simplex printing.
Okay. That's an assumed cost going forward. You went back and made that, I guess, finding, but the original contract didn't count for paying for blank, the language wouldn't have accounted for paying for blank pages, or would it have?
Well, it didn't explicitly.
It did explicitly, okay.
But we knew that that's what's happening.
Right, you said that. I just, again, going back to trying to, you know, what questions have been raised and particularly in the light of that, that now we're saying there's $595,000 that were underbilled for, I guess, the duplex pages. Is that right?
Not for the duplex.
No.
Well, yes, because it's a two-sided document, and they only charge us for one side.
Two-sided documents that may have only been printed on one page.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks. The, and then just on the postage piece of that, going forward, then what assurances are put in place? Because we had this discussion too about metered postage versus indisha, and I would just, I guess, as a final question I have, at least for now, explain that. But going back to the postage, so what is being built into the contract going forward that? Because if you look at the samples that were in the audit, and I appreciate the work that certainly Finance did on this, that, again, 2014 backwards is where we found that. I guess coming forward, you haven't, at least in the samples we're pulling, haven't found any postage discrepancies, either because of change in process and/or adjustments, but certainly going back from 14 back to July of 2010, there were significant, you know, overages in the charges, and that was, you know, basically, you extrapolated that and that's how you get to $320,000. So what was put in place in August, well, at least the sample, but in 2015 that now assures that there won't be those sort of deviations, whether they be very small or very big, in the future?
So I think that DFS could probably answer that more directly about the things that they've done internally.
Right.
What we are doing now is the postage rates are identified in the contract, and they're identified in the invoices that we receive from DFS, and we are now validating all of that. Each and every single invoice, we're validating the postage rates.
Okay. So there is a chewing up?
Yes.
Pretty immediately.
Yes.
May not be that day or that week, but it's done currently.
Upon receipt of the invoice, yes, before it is paid.
Okay. And then just about the last question, about the indisha versus the metered rate and how that is applied and what sort of assurances go with either or of those relative to, not only to the date it was mailed, but obviously the date of receipt is very critical, and, you know, we rely on the US mail to make sure that it gets there. But there, you know, people have, you know, backing off of what it takes a day or two in county to get mail to most of the folks receiving that. So, could you just take a moment on that particular piece? That has been a point of contest, obviously, and it still is even in the communication that we received late yesterday and probably will hear from the podium this morning, so.
So we have had, the greatest way I can describe the success on the indisha in terms of the mail actually getting to the customer. So when we send a mailing, particularly notice of actions or renewal packets that customers are required to complete to continue their benefits, if they get discontinued or benefits get cut off because they did not receive a piece of mail, we get that call immediately, and we don't get those calls. So I know that's not, it's a little subjective, but they're not calling us. The mail is being received, and it is date stamped on the bottom of the envelope. I've seen it personally, so we know the date that it went out, and the customers are receiving the mail.
Previous contract required for a metered approach, and...
And it has been amended to include either meter or indisha.
So it's either or?
It is either or.
Okay. And what would be the plus side of the metered over the indisha if we're still with that? Or is there a downside?
I'm actually not convinced it would be a plus, but again, I'm going to let Eric or someone from DFS respond to that.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other questions for Ann or staff at this point in time? Okay, good. Thank you, Ann. Did we want to have anybody from Finance? Is there anything that needs to be put forward before we hear from the parties?
I don't believe so at this point.
Okay, all right. All right. Okay. I have three speakers signed up, and I'm going to take these in order that I received them. I have Sherri Lambert, Glenn Morgan, and either they can decide who wants to go first, and then also Greg Thatch, so. Okay. Sherri? Okay. Good morning, Sherri.
Hi, good morning. I'm Sherri Lambert. I've been with KP Corporation 31 years, and I'd like to address the board. I had planned out here what I was going to say, but there were a few things Ann brought up, so now I'm kind of out of order about the whole thing. But I'm going to go back to my original plan. I want to make sure the board understands that even though it looks like this is a $9.4 million contract, that in actuality for Sacramento County, with the possible five-year extensions on there, this is over an $18 million contract for Sacramento County. The other counties that participate in Cal-Win piggyback on this contract. So, in reality, this contract is worth well over $50 million, which is one of the reasons we have dug so deep into this when we see the findings from the audit. So, what I wanted to really get into is I'm here to ask you to vote no on the award of this contract, and the main reason being, there were two recent audits done in the last nine months, and there's outstanding findings in both of these audits. And these findings revolve around three main areas. One is invoicing, vendor financial review, and metered postage. So I'll enter into the first one about the invoicing. The first audit that was dated October 4, 2017, found errors in two out of three invoices. At that point, the Department of Finance recommended DFS implement written policies and procedures for its invoice claim submission and cost allocation projects. When you're dealing with postage, it's a variable amount of money. Depending on how many pieces qualify to a five-digit area code, you get, zip code, you get a better rate. If they're three digits, it's different. It's a fluctuating thing. So it's very important so that the county reimburses accurately, there's a way to check this postage, and that the way invoices are created, there's a written procedure and there's documentation that backs up how much postage was actually spent. So they recommended this, and DHA agreed. Yes, there should be written policies and procedures and backup documentation for every invoice submitted. So here we are now at the second audit that's dated, it's on this agenda, it's dated April 24. And one thing that Ann mentioned when she was up here, that there were errors found in 14 invoices. The thing she didn't add is that there were errors found in 14 out of 17 invoices. And these were, these errors found were actually in the county's favor. When we add the issue of the undercharging for the second side, that would make all 17 invoices incorrect. So there's a huge history of incorrect invoicing, and these errors, some go for the county, some go for DFS, but the point is they total $1.2 million. So you asked Ann if she had the breakdown on this, and I have it here. $124,680.38 were for the TDD endorsement. In a previous contract, DFS was allowed to charge a penny a piece for this. When the contract was awarded to them the second time, they were not, but they continued to charge it.
Sherri, I'm going to give you two more minutes, Sherri, because I know you've got some presentations. I'm going to, your time could go on three minutes, I'm going to go give you two more, so that's all right.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to give you two, that's right, I'll give you two more minutes, okay.
Okay. So I, anyway, so I'll go through, so I have the breakdown, we'll save it if you have questions for it, and then there's the $595,000 that they say they were undercharged. And I have a few questions about that. If DFS did undercharge for six and a half years on, I don't know, hundreds, maybe 1,000 invoices they undercharged, can they really go back for six and a half years? I mean, sometimes there's rules on how far a vendor can go back, but that's not my main point. I want to move on a little faster. Main point about the invoicing is that in the second audit, DHA now states on the second audit report, this is not a cost allocation contract, and that written invoice claim submission procedures are unnecessary. I find, I find that really hard with this amount of money and the errors that have been found, that they are saying these are unnecessary, especially after at the first audit, they were necessary. So the current recommendation now is simply for the preparer and the reviewer to sign and date the invoice. I really, I really want to stress the documentation. Next item, financial statement review. The first audit, there were, there were no audited financials from DFS so that DOF could do a financial review. They recommended in the future contract those be required. DHA agreed, and in the second audit, there's no mention of whether or not audited statements will be required for the new contract as agreed to in the first audit, which I think it's extremely important considering the relevancy of these documents, the timeliness, the number of lives it affects, that your vendor be financially healthy and it's followed up and verified that they are. Final, metered postage. Department of Finance discovered that the mail was not metered as per the contract. The contract states the vendor, the contractor shall be reimbursed for postage metered mail at the same discounted postage rate that is actually applied on the letters. This protects the county so that they get the best rate. If those pieces went at the lowest five-digit rate, they get that. If it went at the three-digit rate, they get that. The county pays the actual postage. As soon as you stop metering, there's no way to know the actual postage. Every meter is tied back to a meter machine issued by the post office with a serial number so that you can track the money. With an indisha, you've lost control of tracking the money. You've also lost control of the date the mail piece went out and the ability to see if your vendor has mailed a piece on time. The piece, the mail date on the meter is... mail date on the meter is the date the post office accepts it and it's recognized by the post office. Stamping any other date on there is not recognized.
Sherry, need to wrap up, Sherry, please.
Okay, so my final point on this is that I request that you resubmit the RFP with, one, declaring the meter, so all vendors are participating on a level playing field. When we participated in this RFP, it was understood it was metered. There's a cost to that. So our bid and anyone else's would reflect that, which would, I think, make the RFP unfair. But most importantly for the county, I would reissue the RFP with all the items we have discussed here. One, demand written procedures for invoice documentation. Two, audited financials to make sure that your vendor is healthy financially. And three, to clear up the metered postage and exactly how this postage is documented and make sure the county is paying the actual postage.
Okay. Thank you, Sherry. I would just note that we did, based upon some of the information that was submitted, got a response back on it. I think Ann can address this at the end of the testimony, but that, to the point about requiring audited financial statements, that is a requirement that will be in the contract. And so I understood that point, whoever the vendor would be, that, you know, that's a premise. And I think you, you know, legitimately raised the point. And it's my understanding, and I will have Ann come up and address some of the other issues as well. But, you know, your request is that we reissue the RFP under a different set of...
Yeah, so that it'll be fair.
She said six minutes.
I know. All right, we're done. Okay, thanks. I was just trying to answer one of the questions. That's what I was doing. Okay, I have next in Glenn Morgan and then Greg Thatch.
I just want to say I'd like Ann to address many of the comments made, even though you've already done it, but in a summary fashion, so you can prepare yourself after this.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. My colleague, thank you, Sherry. I'll keep my comments very brief. KP's been doing work for Medi-Cal beneficiaries for 10 years or so, a little bit longer, in 36 different counties. We understand how difficult this type of work is. It's not easy. Delivering these informing materials, making sure that, you know, the postage rate is correct, that the materials are accurate, we understand that. What we're looking at is when we looked at the process that we've gone through in the RFP, there are a number of changes that have taken place. When we look at the audit results, we've been through audits before with KP. If we had 17 out of 17 invoices, we would be in a position where we would certainly understand that the idea is that you'd want to make sure that you had a very thorough response. The challenge that we have and that what we ask for is for the RFP to be reissued just so we can account for all of the recommendations that were made, the changes that are being made to the contract, that those be included in the overall RFP. So that it is a level playing field for everybody that's involved. And ultimately, at the end of the day, we just want to make sure the county has a vendor that is qualified, that can execute on that promise and get you the best deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay. Then I have, and I just, Robin, I may have called Mr. Thatch up, but I would ask you at some juncture, I'm going to ask you about that last point about changes in the RFP and so forth. Okay, Mr. Thatch. And I will allot you five minutes as well, so.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Gregory Thatch, and it's my privilege to represent DFS here today. We do have a lot of people from DFS here, so the degree to which I cannot answer questions, they are certainly available to answer questions. DFS is a local business, as you know, residing here in Sacramento and, I believe, Mr. Serna, in your district. They are committed to the Cal-Win program and have had this contract in performing this work for 12 years, since 1975. Their work is highly regarded by DHA. Some of you may have had an opportunity to tour the facility. I know I have. It's pretty remarkable. The technology is pretty remarkable and you could eat off the floor. It is so clean. This latest RFP, let's keep in mind that DFS was the number one rated competitor in that RFP. And these are not just county evaluators. The other counties served on this evaluation committee too. And not only were they the top rated one, they were the top rated one in every category. There were some audits that have been conducted and Ann has identified those audits and the outcome of those audits. There were some postage errors, but DHA has acknowledged that they were not checking the bills terribly well during some of those years. That is not to forgive the fact that there were errors on the part of DFS, but the fact is that there are no similar problems with the other counties and that is because they hear from other counties. Every bill that goes in has complete backup data that allows each individual bill to be audited in any fashion. Since 1914, there have been no similar errors. And the reason for that is further automation of the facilities.
Since 2014, I think.
Did I?
1914.
1914.
I think it's 2014, but maybe you've been doing this for 100.
I have a little gout in my foot today, so I feel like I was born in about 1914.
Mr. Thatch remembers 1914.
Maybe he does, okay.
Almost. The question costs, Ann has also identified those. These were things that DFS was asked to do, important things. Wanting to provide good customer service, they did them. I believe in the new contract, there will be a methodology to deal with those rather emergency necessary items that go forward. But the bottom line is real simple here. And the bottom line is about $144,000 is owed to DFS and it is willing to negotiate with respect to that amount of money. DFS has continued to provide quality services throughout all of this audit period, through all of the time that your board has been deliberating on this. It has been a long, long haul. Now, we are aware of KP's actions. They have made many allegations, allegations of fraud, which have been disproved, allegations of dishonest activity, which have been disproved, the two-sided issue. It's interesting that they raised the two-sided issue because they too have contracts with the county and they too bill for a blank page. The sole distinction, and I have it here, the sole distinction is on their back blank page, they type the words, "This page intentionally left blank." That's the only difference between their blank page and the blank page that we are talking about for DFS. Let's keep in mind what automation has done here and what duplex printing has done. It has done some pretty remarkable things in saving the county money. Printing on two-sided pages obviously saves money in paper, but it also saves money in postage. It simply weighs less. The other item that DFS has been able to do is to household these, so that if you have more than one piece of information going to that household, it can go in the same envelope. There have been significant cost savings going forward. The county has benefited from those cost savings and it has been a good and positive relationship. We believe that the future is bright. I think that DHA will be looking at these contracts in a more careful way and certainly the automation will continue and will allow DFS to continue to do a good job and improve on that job. I'm here to answer any questions you might have, be it about the Indicia, the two-sided copying, or any other questions.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Okay, Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Greg, for your explanation of your client's disposition on this matter. I have a question, a follow-up question for you and perhaps Ann will note it so that she might elaborate when she comes to the podium as well. And that is you mentioned that other counties enjoy perhaps a richer, more robust means of communication and double-checking things. What are, like, what are some of those protocols that we may want to consider? And do we know whether or not there's, of that subset of counties that are having those regular check-ins, which ones have the least number of errors?
I don't know that I can answer your latter question. I can talk to my client, but I can tell you that, and I've looked at these billings, when these billings go out to a county on a monthly basis, it's not just a page with the bill on it. All of the information, all of the data is attached to that so that it is auditable. I am told that there are counties that go through it with a fine-tooth comb. They call if they have questions or concerns. I think it is understood that this county for some time period didn't do it. Think under current leadership, it's clearly going to be done and we think that would clear it up. If in fact, it was this board's wish that somehow we talked to these other counties and I'm sure Ann can do that better than we can anyway, and find out what they may be doing. But it is really pretty easy to take a look at that bill and audit it. The information, as you may know, goes to HP, is generated by HP. That information then comes to the contractor for printing and mailing. And that is one of the very good things here is that we know that that lines up totally. So you can look at it, you can easily examine it and audit it. Mr. Serna, if you wanted more detail, I'd have to get somebody else up here.
No, I appreciate it. And I'll look forward to Ann's response when she comes up here in a minute. But I'm looking through the list in our board letter, the list of other, the 15 counties. And I just want to make it clear that we're not apples to oranges here. These are analogous counties as far as I'm concerned. There's Alameda and San Diego, San Francisco. So they're not small rural counties that are doing far less. In fact, they're probably doing more printing and mailing than we are. So if they're actually doing that at a greater volume and enjoying greater success in terms of fewer errors, I think it's incumbent upon us that if it's the will of the board to go with staff's recommendation, that we understand where and how the success has sustained itself in other counties. And I'm hopeful to hear more about that from Ann. Thank you.
Just one question, maybe this is not so much your, Greg, but why once again do the other counties piggyback on Sacramento County?
You're right, it's not for me.
Okay, all right. Thanks. Any other questions for Mr. Thatch? All right, if not...
Thank you.
Good, thanks, Rick. Okay, those are all the speakers. And I have a question for Councilman, I mean, County Councilman, but Ann, maybe you want to respond and then I'll...
Sure. Let me start with the other counties. I want to be clear that the other counties do not piggyback on our contract. They piggyback on our procurement. So when we select the provider, then they use that procurement to take to their board, but they negotiate their own individual contract with DFS. So their terms may be different. The contracts are completely separate and distinct county by county. So that's an important thing to note. In terms of how other counties do it, I mean, I said it earlier, we've done a terrible job at DHA in terms of validating invoices and we are doing it now. We have the information we need to validate it.
We're not doing a terrible job now, right?
We're not doing a...
We're doing it differently now.
We are doing a great job now.
Thank you. Just want to make that an important distinction.
Thank you. But we in the past have done a terrible job. And so, and other counties have a wide variety of ways in which they monitor their contracts based on their county's policies and procedures. Every single county that contracts with DFS is aware of both of the agreed-upon procedures performed. They have all been given copies of both reports. I'm the co-chair of the Cal-Win Board and at every monthly meeting, we talk about this and where we are. So everyone is completely and 100% aware of all that is going on. But they have their own internal policies and procedures around monitoring contracts. The other thing I wanted to address is it was stated that DHA stated in our comments that we didn't think there needed to be written policies and procedures around invoice. That's not accurate. On page one of nine of the audit, we indicate that we don't need policies and procedures for a cost allocation policy because this is not a cost allocation contract. It's a fee-for-service contract. So we do agree there's no policy required for that. We do also agree that there needs to be policies and procedures around invoicing. And part of DHA standard invoicing process and contract language includes those practices for invoicing and the requirement of a signature on each and every invoice. And we will require that in any contract. Also regarding the audited financials, the contract in, historically, this contract has not required the provider to present audited financials. The new contract will absolutely require that annually and we will receive it, review it, and respond as necessary. And those were all of my notes. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Thanks, Ann. I wanted to just go back for a moment and maybe Counsel Dravon can weigh in on this as well, is that did the RFP call only for a metered postage application or did it provide for Indicia? I understand what you said, that it's either or in the contract, but did the RFP, and if so, are we able to through the award process and to the point that Mr. Morgan made at the podium a moment ago, that, you know, somehow that may have changed the playing field as relates to people's submittals and whether it was DFS or KP or anybody else. And so I just, I want to be sure. Again, that was not a point that I'd seen raised previously. And so I want to be clear as to what we call, what we ask for in our request. And then obviously the responses that were given that were weighted upon a variety of things. But then now what you've just mentioned here today, that, you know, it could be metered or Indicia. It sounds like Indicia is the preferred methodology, whether one agrees or disagrees with that. And so I want to be sure about as we approach making some determination here this morning.
So if I'm understanding correctly, the RFP said metered?
It did.
I would just say that this is, began its generation as a standard general services contract, which provides a broad latitude for amendments or changes with all parties present or communicated to in that process. So I would say getting from A to B is within our discretion because that latitude is granted to us in the negotiation of that RFP and eventual award.
Okay, well, let me ask the question this way then, and it's hypothetical, but it does apply. So what if, if as a responder and I chose the meter route and that was several million dollars more to do that, but the Indicia was less, and I don't know, again, I don't want to be exaggerative here, and I submitted to the RFP and was graded down because my cost was a lot higher. I don't, again, I don't know that's the case with the folks that are here. And so then I get not recommended to proceed because my cost is so much more based upon what I chose in responding to RFP. If I hear you correctly, the latitude then is there. So Indicia, in this case, happens to be another methodology. It may not provide that sort of economies, but even so, and if I contemplated that in my bid, I'm going to use that, even though it wasn't what was called for, and I based my submittal on that, how is that given within the latitude then, Robin? Because that seems to be a little, you know, just practically speaking, it seems to be a bit outside because you can get screened out because you take into account and you use an Indicia method that was not, that was not what we asked for in the initial request for proposals.
All I can say is that the legal significance, you know, provided that, I don't have it in front of me, but usually there's a circular communication about those things which are pointed with the bottom line being the dollar value. And if it qualifies under that appropriate mechanism, it can lead to looking at the bottom dollar line.
Yeah.
So it's my understanding that the cost difference is insignificant, but I can't quantify that for you today. But I'm also told that if the cost had been significantly different, it still would not have changed the outcome of the overall score and thus granting the award to DFS.
Okay, I understand that, Kay. But I just, I think for clarification, and I appreciate what you've offered here, but if we ask for something and people provide an alternative response and we consider that, that ought to be made clear because, again, my experience has shown me that, you know, and that at times we are very rigid because, well, this is what we asked for. If you didn't meet the request and you get basically, you know, you are called out. That wasn't the case here, obviously, but, you know, I think we need to be, whether it's general services or DHA that's doing the contracting, then if we're going to allow flexibility, or you anticipate there may be there, that we don't, you know, because, again, I've had conversations with you recently about another set of RFPs where because the pages weren't numbered right, they got basically thrown out from the get-go. And so, again, I don't want to draw all that into this today, but I just, it seems to me that if we're going to be rigid or flexible or both... me that if we're going to be rigid, or flexible, or both, that that needs to be consistently applied, not just for DHA, but for general services. And I point that out, because, again, I've got examples, we've talked about on another front, that where I thought we were a bit rigid with regards to the application of that. Can I ask a question? Ms. Peters?
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I didn't have the staff report when we met, so I didn't get a chance to ask you this question. And it's attachment one, I was trying to determine the significance of it, and it's the estimated annual print images. And Sacramento County's is 22 million, and the next, and these are Cal-Win counties, the next closest is 14 million, and that's from San Diego. I'm just, so we're a lot more than the other Cal-Win counties, and...
That's because we have our renewal packets sent from, through this process, and other counties send their own renewal packets. So we, we give more of our printing business to DFS than other counties do.
Okay, so it's really not apples to apples here?
No.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Ann, you want to respond? Okay. All right. I can't take any questions from the audience, we're not going to do that chair at this point in time. Okay, let me ask board members, and any other comments? You have a recommendation before us, and we certainly have heard from speakers on this, so I'll turn to my colleagues.
Like to move staff's recommendation?
Second. Okay, so moving second to approve staff recommendation, and any other comments by board members? I would just comment that I think that certainly some of the questions that were raised throughout the process have brought some enlightenment to what we're, action we're taking here today, and albeit, I understand the concerns, I intend to support the staff recommendation. And I guess I would just ask one other question before we vote. So is it normal to go with a five-year, and then another five, five potential year extensions to a 10-year contract on something like this? Is that, is there, is there a normal, is that not a very lengthy period of time to go for potentially a decade? Probably a question for Ann. Yeah. So maybe I should have asked you when you done her before, but that's... Because, again, it's healthy to have the competition, and obviously, we have it in here in this room this morning, and so that seems to be like a fairly lengthy potential period of time, so...
It is lengthy, and the process of doing this kind of procurement is costly and lengthy as well. So it was our opinion, as well as general services, and this is sort of standard for this kind of contract. And it certainly is a five-year contract that allows five years' extension, and it's over the course of the five years, we will be validating, auditing, making sure that we're getting everything that we are supposed to get, and that it's all happening accurately, and we'll then make that decision near the end of the five, first five years.
Maybe I could ask, again, this wasn't a part of the motion, nor a part of the staff recommendation, but that, at that five-year juncture, before we extend, that we could have a report to the board, because, again, that is a fairly lengthy period of time, and would allow the opportunity certainly to, you're going to do this annually, I understand, you're going to be much more, you know, assertive in making sure that things are adhered to. But I do think in light of, you know, certainly this conversation we've had over the past eight or nine months now, since this first came to the board in October of last year, or was proposed to, I do think it, you know, when we look at that period of time, certainly a change out of board members potentially over that period of time, over a 10-year period, if that were the, you know, the end result, I think it's important for contracts that have, you know, a $2 million a year price tag assigned to them, and whether it's this one or other ones, that maybe, you know, a juncture check-in before extensions are entered into beyond the initial five-year term. And I would ask that, if the maker of the motion would be okay with that, that, get that direction. Second, or, okay.
Happy to do that.
All right. So we'll include that in the motion. All right, if nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thanks to all parties, and we'll move to the next item.
Item 44 is the report back on the operations of Gibson Ranch County Park and authorizing the Director of Regional Parks to execute the First Amendment of the lease agreement.
All right, Ms. Latherman.
Thank you, members of the board. Jeff Latherman, Director of Regional Parks. Just by a quick summary from the last couple of weeks, again, the board gave direction after receiving notice from GRP to continue to look within the confines of the lease structure on how we might amend the existing lease agreement to allow for the continued operation of GRP at Gibson Ranch. During our last board meeting, when this item was continued, the board gave direction to staff to revise our recommendations in looking at changing out the recommendation for increasing the fees to an alternative recommendation. What you have before you has changed, with that one exception, in that we've taken out the recommendation for an increase in fee schedule, and substituted that with an option for county staff and/or a county contractor to take on certain types of maintenance responsibilities at Gibson Ranch. With the exception of that change, the remainder of our recommendation is the same as it was the time we were before Hugh, two weeks ago, and I'll just go over those really quickly. That the county would continue to pay all lease, or all utilities for the park operation, including water, and the utilities associated with the pumping of the water. We would maintain the wells and the well pumps at Gibson Ranch. We would provide an annual allocation of $50,000 for the capital improvement, structures and facilities there at Gibson Ranch. We would be installing an automatic fee machine that would allow Gibson Ranch to continue to collect payment when the kiosk isn't staffed with personnel. We would, then, this is the revision, take on some maintenance obligations, and I'll touch on the details of that here in just a second. And the lease expires, would, normally would expire in 2021. That would be revised to one-year lease agreement with potential four additional extensions for a total lease term of five years. In our recommendation for the maintenance obligations, we haven't defined that in your staff report, and the process that we would undertake for exactly what either county staff or a county contractor would do would happen here in June and July. We would work with Mr. Osi to identify specific maintenance responsibilities that would be of minimum impact to his overall operations. For example, where Mr. Osi does a lot of his weddings and special events, kind of in the upper terrace near the ranch house, having additional maintenance staff, either whether it be county or a county contractor, potentially working in that area, could have a conflict or create conflict with his special events. So we want to be able to work out with Mr. Osi where it makes the most sense for us to be working with the least amount of impact on his operations, define what that would be, and then continue to work with him to have a final definition of what those maintenance responsibilities would be. What we're looking to do ultimately is offsetting his operational costs by $60,000, and that would then be a county-operated cost associated with the regional parks budget in the coming 17, 18 fiscal year cycle. Did I explain that clear enough? If there's any questions about that?
Okay, was that clear enough? Oh, Ms. Frost.
And then the fees would stay the same?
That's correct.
Do you have any idea of what the details are on the maintenance, or are you...
As Mr. Osi and I have talked about this concept, you know, really what we're forecasting right now is, again, a way to minimize the impact. And how I define minimizing the impact is cutting grass in the open turf areas where there's a lot of picnicking, but not a lot of special events. Mr. Osi would potentially continue to retain the underground work in the irrigation infrastructure so that contract staff or county staff isn't actually digging ditches out in the park where Mr. Osi would have special events. Looking at the pastures that are formerly the grazing pastures now used for special events and other parking operations, potentially mowing or cutting the grass on a seasonal basis in those areas, and being able to structure either contractor, county staff work to work around the special event schedule to make that work. Those are the ideas that we're talking about right now. We're going to define those, assuming that the board moves this item here in the next couple of weeks as we move into the summer. Our goal and target is, not later than October 1st, that the county would be resuming some of those maintenance responsibilities, as well as it would line up with your final budget deliberations in September as well.
Thank you for figuring it out, and I'm prepared, if there's no further questions, to move staff's recommendation authorizing the Director of Regional Parks to negotiate and execute the First Amendment to the lease agreement.
Second.
Okay, so moving second. Jeff, anything else you needed to add?
No other comments, sir.
Mr. Osi's here with a tie on, so I don't know, we don't want to give him a chance at the podium here. Good morning, Doug.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members. I am adorned in attire that I don't normally wear, and the sooner I can get back to work, the better. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions? Seeing now we do have a motion to second, then, and thank all the parties for their work on this, and the quick turnaround, then, nothing further. Anyone wish to address this item? Seeing none, then please vote.
Ms. Peters?
I thought I already did, sorry.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Thank you all. Very good. Right. Next item, please.
Item 45 is the transient occupancy tax grant program scoring process and review panel.
Mr. Givens. Good morning, Chairman Natoli and members of the board. Troy Givens with Sacramento County Department of Economic Development. I may have a few overheads as well. I'm here to provide follow-up information regarding the TOT grant program. I'll give you a short background, a profile of the submitted applications, and then staff recommendations on a review panel, scoring criteria, and a process. As your board is aware, Sacramento County collects a 12% transit occupancy tax generated from nightly room stays for hotels and motels in the unincorporated area. Historically, the board has distributed these funds to community service programs, neighborhood programs, civic programs, as well as the general fund. During years where additional TOT dollars were unallocated, the board would accept requests from various organizations to support programs and capital projects. That practice was halted a number of years ago, when we had a significant decline in TOT revenues due to incorporations, as well as a significant economic recession. This year, members of the board asked that staffs, again, revisit this with a board workshop, and make funds available once again. So I have a little bit of a timetable here on the overhead.
Troy, if I could just make a note for the record one more time, that the reductions of revenues just got transferred to another account, because revenue neutrality still brought that to the county general fund, it just didn't come to the TOT.
That's correct.
We didn't lose a lot of money.
The color of money comes in differently to the county.
Yeah, so we, you know, we just, it just was not in this money, because it got transferred to city incorporations or annexations, but it still is coming to the county through another route. Thanks.
So in February, there was a board workshop to discuss TOT allocations and policy that resulted in a handful of criteria, and the directions to set aside $1 million in the upcoming budget. We received 149 applications. Staff was directed to get the word out. I think we successfully worked with Kim Nava and others to make sure that all organizations were outreach to. In May, after your board reviewed those application packets, you provided the county executive with some additional feedback, requesting additional definition on a process. As I mentioned earlier, there were a total of 149 applications received. They totaled about $18.5 million in requests. On page two of your staff report, you have a little more detailed breakout of those categories. There were nine categories, including animal care services, arts and culture, workforce development, community development, economic development, health services, human services, and parks, parks and recreation, and youth development. Each of these applications were screened by both economic development staff to ensure that they met the minimum criteria that your board had established, as well as county council to ensure that these organizations were eligible to receive county funds. Based on that additional feedback to the county executive, staff has come up with a series of recommendations. First, that there be a review panel made up of two board members selected today, as well as you may choose to augment that process for the panel with county staff or subject matter experts. We've proposed a scoring methodology that's included in page three of your staff report. There's 100-point total on this matrix. This matrix was developed not only from your board's feedback, but from also reviewing documents and interacting with organizations such as the Sacramento Region Community Foundation and others that apply best practices in this process. This scoring methodology is really designed to assess the organization and governance of these entities that have applied for funds, detailed analysis of the project and program assessment, assessment of their funding capabilities, and scoring on community need and support. We also heard at that hearing that, or that feedback to the board, that one or more board members expressed concern that funding may be dominated by one or more categories. So we suggest that you may want to consider funding at least one project per category of the nine categories.
Did you, does your scoring allow, given you did it for, again, people submitted, again, we gave them the floor at $20,000, we allowed for the two-year implementation, but folks, you know, there was a wide range, you know, some were upwards of a half million, and others were at $20,000. But there may be a framework, particularly looking at the funding piece of this, where folks could still do a portion, maybe a significant portion of what they proposed for a lesser dollar amount. You're not going to know that, or the panel won't know that, though, from the applications submitted. And that may allow for, obviously, for a broader distribution of funds, still, you know, making sure that, you know, the tasks that were outlined could be addressed by the organization as they propose, but, you know, so what sort of...
That is correct. And in the application process, and one of the questions that we asked is, what if your organization did not receive the full funding amount requested? So we could get an understanding of whether they could deliver a portion of those services, or whether they could bring in matching funds to augment those services and so forth. So we tried to capture that, but there is additional information that could be gathered through that panel process as well, in order to address that. But it would allow the flexibility to potentially fund more organizations if they were not fully funded, and you had additional information and feedback.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Frost, question?
I want to, I guess, request that on the review panel, it talks about two board members. I'm good with that, but I wanted to confirm that all the districts are represented, so that there's a representative from each district, or each supervisor is represented, either that they themselves, or their chief of staff, so that each district is represented.
We can't be themselves, that's the whole point of having two.
I know, but I don't mind if my chief of staff represents. I don't have to be one of the two.
Yeah, you said themselves, or their chief of staff, so we have to have it, just only two members of this board.
Pardon me?
You can't have a third, that's a Brown Act violation.
I know, I just said, I would like to have each district represented, either with the supervisor or their chief of staff, and there can, obviously, there can be only two board members represented on the committee.
You mean, you mean at the committee?
At committee, yeah.
Yes, because of the Brown Act, but at minimum, each district is represented.
I'd like, I'd like to understand from county council if that's even possible, for the, for the, for there to be two voting members of the committee from this board with a third, or a fourth, or fifth member from this board, even in the, even in the room.
And even chiefs of staff is ex parte, you're still...
No, that's not what I'm saying.
No, no.
I'm, that's not what I said.
No.
What I'm saying is that each district is represented, either with a supervisor or a chief of staff. The committee can only have two supervisors.
But it still may present an issue, because it's the serial communications, and we talk with our chiefs of staffs, as we, people would expect, and so, we want to be represented, and so it may be that you have to do this in a notice fashion, whether you have two board members, one board member, or all five of us, and/or our chiefs of staff, because I don't see how you're going to get around that, very frankly, as I thought of it.
That's the trouble, you're building consensus for the people's business, i.e. distributing money under this program. So the criteria, like this discussion over what kind of criteria you want to utilize for making those decisions, could be recommended through staff, but I think the decisions for what, how those, those rankings will be occurring is a, is a board decision, the way you've set it up.
Well, but that, that would... I mean, I would see the three chiefs of staff for the non-represented districts by a member of the board, it's all coming as a recommendation, or a sorting out process. They're not making the decision in the committee.
They're just vetting the application...
They're just vetting the applications under a scoring criteria, and then presenting it for a final decision by the Board.
I think you got a serial meeting problem. I mean, I defer to our attorney.
Well, if we can't have equal representation of all the districts, then vetting under a scoring criteria by the staff would be my next, but I don't understand if in the beginning why we were going to, we were going to do chiefs of staff, or all of our chiefs of staff were going to vet these applications, and then there was one or two Board members.
And that still could be problematic, I think. Again, not that they can't do work on our behalf, but I still think that when it comes to funding decisions, potentially, and so maybe you just do it in a notice fashion. You set us out of a hearing room and let people do their work, and if people want to sit there and watch their work, I mean, that's...
Supervisor Natoli, the date that we had suggested was a public, public notice meeting.
For?
July 18th.
But that was for the Board to take consideration?
But that's for the committee.
Oh, the committee?
If we're going to do a committee, we had anticipated it would be a public meeting. Anybody can attend that. And then whatever comes out of that has, still has to come back to the Board for the Board to make the final approval.
So that July 18th wasn't, I think we put it on the Board of Supervisors calendars as our session.
We did not know which, if you went with that option, which two you might want. We wanted to reserve the time. That's why we asked for that date.
Well, if it's a public meeting, can all the chiefs of staff and two Board members do?
Yeah, whoever wants to be there. No, we anticipate that this might be an issue, so we made a public meeting then.
Okay.
That works.
Well, then, how can we use chiefs of staff for all the other things that we do? To take meetings for us on subject matter, to make recommendation on committee members? I'm really not, sorry, I'm just not getting this.
They do the interviews for, make a recommendation on the interviews for, you know, Boards and Commissions. They do take briefings, as Supervisor Peters correctly states, as relates to some of the advisory commissions that this Board appoints. They do meetings, again, and report back to us. But I guess I would say what maybe distinguishing factor here is it just involves a funding type of decision.
And that was my criteria, but these are, these are funding decisions, a million dollars is being distributed as opposed to appointments of personnel, which ultimately do come to this Board, but are, you have a public process for reviewing it. This, if the decision for the award is accepted, you know, that decision is the same as a Board decision.
Yeah, sure. What if each supervisor is already making decisions relating to their TOT funds? And so this is just TOT funds, you know, set aside for community and economic development. If we were to divide it up, a million dollars between five districts for 200,000 for each district, could each supervisor then make their individual decision regarding the funds that are going to their district?
If the Board sets that policy and makes that decision and grants that, you would be granting Board authority discretionarily to each Board member for the...
We do that already.
Right.
Right.
But that's not what we decided on this process. We decided to go to a more, a broader process that would certainly involve all of us, and it wouldn't necessarily guarantee any particular, you know, organization and/or geographical area that they'd get, you know, a one-fifth proportional share, that we were going to vet this in a way that, you know, would allow us to take a look at community benefit, certainly, you know, it's not all geographically based, either unincorporated or incorporated. We opened it up pretty broadly. I think we're finding out, obviously, there's, you know, requires, you know, a good deal of attention and time. I would just say, I'm okay with the process. If you already notice this is a public meeting, that you two of us and/or all of us, if we want to be there that day, you know, for the scoring and/or through our chiefs of staff, I'm fine with that. Just if it's publicly noticed, it takes care of the issue. I mean, basically, you're going to do scoring, vetting, people can come in there if they choose to. I imagine it's going to be a pretty full session for a better part of a day, I would imagine.
I don't, I don't know that the hearing rooms are going to be big enough.
I don't either. So maybe you reserve, you have to reserve more chambers then, let people work off the daisier. That's fine.
I have another request, and that would be in relation to the scoring criteria. I'd like to request some, you know, it doesn't have to be exact, but some equal representation I'd like to talk about, I guess, with my colleagues, unincorporated versus cities, and equal district representation. I'd like to hear your thoughts about that. I mean, I'm excited about money going to my district, obviously, and I'm sure we all are, so how do we, I mean, can that be included in the scoring criteria that says one, minimum of one applicant approval for each of the nine categories? So we're segregating out that each category has to be acknowledged in the decision-making, but we're not talking about districts.
Okay. That question's been put out on the table here. I don't, I don't get a chance to respond to these. Supervisor Kennedy wanted to weigh in, and we'll come back to that.
Yeah, so I'm going to try to stumble through, because I wasn't very articulate the last time this came up, and I tried to explain my thinking on incorporated versus unincorporated district versus non-district, and that's the, if you look at the applications, the 149 applications we got, almost every one of them crosses all over the place. And just because an organization has an office in one district, which is probably what it's, what it says on the application, is their office headquarters, doesn't mean it doesn't serve an entirely different district, or all the districts, or two or three of the districts. So it's, it's really, it's impossible to categorize these as district by district. I mean, most of these provides countywide services. Same thing with unincorporated versus, they don't stop at the city lines. Yeah, so, I mean, these are countywide organizations, most of them, so I just don't see the logic in trying to define city versus county and district versus district.
Okay. Supervisor Serna, and I see we're coming to Supervisor Frost, obviously, posing questions.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I am not interested in serving on the committee, so there's plenty of other interest here, just because of the time demands. But I will tell you that I think staff put a lot of thought into the recommendation, and I know that our CEO has been very careful to touch base with all five of us and our chiefs in the development of the criteria and the recommendations. So I'm feeling pretty confident that, and I also trust my colleagues. I also feel like there's enough understanding up here about what's important to the broader county. Geographically, by subject area, I think the, you know, the fact that staff is looking at a scoring criteria that would capture kind of the nine general categories as they've been developed based on the type of proposals that have come in is a good, is a good addition to the overall process. So I'm feeling fairly confident that this will get worked out. I think having it worked out in public is a lot stronger than having it worked out in private. And I think, in fact, that the process would certainly benefit from having it be a publicly noticed meeting with anyone desiring to be at the, be in the room, literally, when the committee convenes and has its discussion, to hear what is being said and to even contribute. So those are my sentiments, Mr. Chair, but I think this represents a good start. And again, I think there's an acknowledgement generally, but certainly from me, that this likely will be refined over, if this continues to be of interest generally to the Board over the years, it will continue to be refined over the years. Thanks.
I need to make a quick quip here, that one way to make it easier is put more money in the pot, so.
Okay.
One way to make it easier is put more money in the pot.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Don't disagree with that.
Okay. Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I'm not interested in putting more money in the pot. We have so many other interests. I assume you were kidding about that.
Well, I said a quip, yeah.
Yeah, a quip. I thought the points that were laid out in the staff report were pretty good. I think one, another one worth considering, I'm not saying this is flat out, is to maybe have one large gift and, you know, that is 250,000, so you can make a significant gift each year. And, I mean, that could be a category. And then a couple in the 50,000 range, you know, I would use the first 500,000, in other words, to split up into larger, larger gifts, largest, medium-large, and then spread the rest out into smaller gifts, just so that if one particular district has, you know, a community center that just needs 250,000 to go over the top, that kind of thing, I think that should be considered. And if, but if there isn't a group that, that would make, that's just right for that in a particular year, then it wouldn't need to be a hard and fast rule, but a suggestion. So other than that, the only way I see to really, and then also in that would be in the other 500,000, that perhaps 250 of that, or 200 be divided amongst the Board members to go into their district funds.
How much?
200,000 divided by five, whatever that...
An addition to what's already appropriated?
Yeah, yeah, so some larger, so you've got 250 for smaller gifts, a certain amount to go into the district funds, and then a large and some medium-sized gifts. I'm always buying streetlights and pavement in my district, so those don't generally qualify under this kind of activity category.
Would you consider, in terms of this small, medium, large concept, something that maintains some proportionality to the number of areas that we're considering? Because here's my concern with that, is that we have 149 applications. We've got, the staff has divvied those up into nine kind of program areas or nine subject matter areas. And I'm feeling like with that number, and if you were to, because we only have a million to work with, if you take a quarter million out of that, you're working with 750 million, or 750,000.
Now you're with Don.
Yeah, right. I actually wish I was, I was talking about 750 million. But then you would take out some for our districts, another 250, right? And so pretty soon, you're talking about a pretty small amount to spread over nine categories. And so that's, that's kind of my concern with the larger chunk. I don't necessarily disagree with it in concept, maybe a little smaller than a quarter million.
My thought about that was, I don't particularly agree that we have to give one in each category, because every year, the categories are going to change. So, I mean, I think this was helpful to understand, but next year, maybe we'll have 149 animal care requests, Don.
Yeah, then we probably just have a fundamental disagreement there on the nine, the way the nine categories have been presented.
Yeah, well, I mean, you could, the way this is entitled, you could combine health and human services, community development, economic development could be one category, you know, those are, and youth development might work into workforce development. I mean, so I just see that the categories are just what this is this year, so.
They're based on the current crop of applications, correct?
But that's what I'm saying about maintaining some proportionality. So, for instance, if you had four categories as opposed to nine next year, it goes up by the, the big pot would go up some proportional amount, given the fact that we only have nine categories that are, four categories that come in that year. If it were to go up to 15, you'd have a smaller amount. That way, it's always kept in check.
I believe the county executive had mentioned coming back with a report back at some point where we could do some additional analysis and look at a concept like that and how, if you, the Board chose to identify four major topic areas that they were interested in, how that could be applied, certainly.
Our work plans come back in January to a status update. What did we learn from this? What kind of changes we see going forward? So each year, we're going to keep refining this process.
Yeah, we threw the doors pretty wide open as far as the solicitation of application, which was, again, I think that, you know, was positive in the sense that, you know, maybe a lot of, a lot of applications and trying to sort through the process, just as we, you know, begin, you know, win only is down a bit, but I think it shows there's a lot of, you know, quality of life type of endeavors, and they, you know, range of at least the nine categories here, but you could, you know, combine those or break them apart further, and I just think that shows there's a lot of opportunity for us to invest.
Some of these categories have crossover. Some of these categories have crossover.
Yeah, but there's an opportunity to invest in a community for a million dollars, however we only do that, that wasn't there, you know, even this time last year. So I think that's a positive, and this won't be any probably relatively easy task. I don't think, I don't see that. I think it's the scoring itself. I mean, if we get to this in one day, you're going to be doing whoever it is of us and others that is going to be doing well to get through in that amount of time. And I wouldn't feel confined by the categories, I guess. I think that that's a...
You would what?
I wouldn't feel confined by the categories in the sense that if we're going to start scoring these, that we do our best to try to, you know, look to...
That's why I kind of went for amounts, because that spreads you over just different kinds of organizations.
But again, I don't even know, to amounts, I appreciate the comment, though, that, you know, if you get one significant award, maybe some others, but that would be in the medium to small-size category. I guess the recommendation here, I'm, for purposes of today's discussion, I'm okay. It's a starting spot. We may end up back at this Board having to, you know, go back and forth about, you know, well, we got this many, got scored this, and yet we only got this amount of money, and so what do we do? And I guess I'd like to hear from some of the folks, though, and that's my point. I guess I'll just leave it at this, that, you know, there may be ability to provide some seed money here, that, again, whether they get matching or otherwise, allows them to do some things that they couldn't otherwise do, and if, whether it's 20,000 or 250,000 or something in between or more, it's money that, again, is going to be available for them to do, you know, do projects and services in this community. And it may be a little bit of apples and oranges in the comparison, because some of these, you know, might stand up well over here, but not as well over here.
Yeah, I'm not, I wouldn't say that the monetary categories I'm suggesting are hard and fast, but I think it just broadened the discussion.
Some guidance.
Yeah, some guidance, and, you know, 250 large, 250 small, 250 medium, and 250 to Board offices.
There was mentioned in the report about matching funds and that they would be given, could possibly be given priority. Did we include that in the application process? Did they know that if they had matching funds, they would have, those projects would take priority?
That's correct.
I'm, as long as, I guess, as long as there's someone from each district on the committee, I'm good with whatever we decide together for the rest. That's my big, my big thing.
Mr. Gill, you're going to send through all of these, correct?
Correct.
No delegation?
I didn't realize I had an option on that.
Okay.
Did you have any other slides, Troy?
No.
Okay.
That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thanks, Troy.
I'd move the staff recommendation with the added direction to have the categories as suggested, and I'm open to discussion on the amounts in the categories. That's just kind of a starting point, too.
Okay, we have a motion.
And that includes representation from each district?
Representation by all members, all district offices.
So we would come back and talk about the amounts later? The big amount, the small amount, all that? So you're not making your motion, Susan, with 250 in mind?
Well, that's, that's my mind. I have it in mind, but if, you had mentioned earlier that you might want to discuss the amounts for each category.
Maybe the committee could decide that.
Yeah. Actually, it'd be great if Troy's office, on your magic computer, tell us how many fall in different categories.
We do have a breakdown of that. We can provide that.
I'm not saying it's hard and fast, I just...
So your office would guide instead?
It's the notion.
Yeah, I just, I'm happy to support it, but I think the, as we continue to refine this, I guess, the idea of having a large award is fine, is good, and I understand the rationale behind... the rationale behind it, I just think keeping some sense of proportionality, so that the balance of the other categories don't kind of get short, don't get short shrift.
I didn't have the information on how many projects...
Yeah, I think there's a table that is in the board letter, right, that shows it by category?
That's just aggregate, so it doesn't provide the amount of detail that Supervisor Peters is requesting. But we can provide that to your office.
Okay, so, some general guidance that, you know, to look to large, medium, small, and some district allocation, again, without necessarily assigning numbers to that, that for the committee direction, for the purposes of at least embarking on this, and recognizing it's all going to come back here anyway, so, but that may help us in at least refining the information that's then only submitted to this board by either via recommendation and/or some sort of, you know, list of, you know, ranking, or whatever that is.
We could provide an executive summary that has that information to both the board and the panel, if that would be of help.
You have to move the stand-up, I can't hear you very well today, Troy.
What he was saying is that we can provide that information to the committee and to the full board.
Okay, all right. And the 16th of July is intended to be not a formal Board of Supervisors meeting, but a committee meeting, is that...
Committee meeting, which is public.
And then, today, do we need, do we want to determine which board members pick the straws, or is that something we want to talk about later?
Well, the four of you can pick straws.
Everybody's in the pot.
We would like to have a decision today.
I'm officially shaking myself out of the running.
You start doing that, I'm sorry.
Last member standing.
We're down to three, then.
Yeah, no, 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 no. Pick a number between one and 10. Chairs rule here.
First, may I throw out the name, I'd like to do it, and I think Patrick ought to do it, then you've got unincorporated, and you've got city membership.
Yeah, don't kick me, but I was thinking the same thing, Patrick.
But you're at this meeting, and you're getting picked, you know, usually we pick you when you don't attend.
Yeah, well, I'll have an opportunity. That's fine.
Yeah, I don't have to be there, I'm good with this anyway.
And again, I think any one of us can be present for all or part of that day, if we choose to. I think that's, you know, again, and I think we'll have it in these chambers, and so, as that, we've got two board members, suggested, I'm fine with that, but if, again, if...
We could all be there if it's a meeting.
Yeah, we could all, yeah, that's right, so if we choose not to...
So, why are we picking? Or, I guess...
Well, I don't know about you, but if I can show up, I plan on being held to my three minutes, so...
You'll be sitting out there.
But you could be, you know, again, if we're calling this as, you know, we're an advertising board supervisors meeting, there won't be any final decision, but it'll be, you know, it'll be brought in the committee, because if you have a third, or fourth, or even a fifth one in the audience, again, that, you know, because if we choose not to assign the chief of staff to do the task, and we could, you know, very well, you could have three, or four, or five of us up here, it sounds like four of us at most, but...
So, are, I'm confused, are two of us coming? Two are coming.
These two are for certain, yeah. They have to be here, the others can, you know, all of us can...
We can decide what we want, okay. Perfect, that's good, I'm happy.
And then, who from staff is going to be the scribe? Is that you? No, that's Nat.
We will...
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Mr. Gill?
It would be me or a designee.
Well, you better have some folks in the audience, because I think, and is our notice going out to folks?
There will be a notice to go out to all 149 applicants.
Should someone from community and economic development be on the committee?
Yes, that would be Troy.
Troy, so you're going to be sitting up?
I will be here.
Up here, okay, so Troy will be up here, it'll be a committee of six, at least.
It's growing.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Well, yeah, five represented, and then Mr. Gibbons, okay. All right, so we have a motion, then, I think, with that guidance, and with the fact that Ms. Peters has volunteered Mr. Kennedy to serve on the committee, and he's going to get back at her somewhere along the line.
I think he's lining several chits over there.
Yeah, I can see, it's already lined up. All right, and then, with the understanding, we'll notice, folks, is it July 16th or July 18th?
18th.
July 18th, yes. And what time will you be convening in these chambers?
I...
No, right now, we have it on hold for 9:30, projecting that it might take all day.
Yes, I think that's a good idea, so you make arrangements, and so, and it may be that, as you begin to winnow this down a little bit, that, so people don't have to sit here all day, maybe there's a way to break it up in a way that, you know, at least they can say, you can be here after 10, or be here after noon, maybe you can do it in a way that, you know, doesn't...
We'll work with the county executive.
Yeah, they can come and be here all day if they choose to, but at least give some guidance, because you have nonprofits, you have public entities and others who...
Sure.
You know, may have a little bit of difficulty sitting here for seven, eight, or nine hours, even though they may have potential, you know, striking bonanza, but, okay, all right, we have a motion, second?
If Patrick and I are on the committee, it will not be a 10-hour meeting.
We'll start at seven.
No.
Okay, all right, so with that, nothing further than, I guess, just with direction, please vote?
Unanimous vote.
Okay, maybe the last unanimous vote on this particular item, but with good hopes that we will get the unanimity on the rest of it. Okay, all right, thank you for that, and let's go to the next item.
Item 46, adopt salary equity adjustment for the Sacramento County Employees Retirement System.
Okay, we have a staff recommendation, I see Mr. Fowler here, President of the Retirement Board is here, along with the Executive Officer, Interim Executive Officer, so did you want to, are we just going to go to Rick?
Let Mr. Fowler present, I think we know what the issue is at hand.
Okay, okay, Rick, good afternoon now, and thank you, we did receive your correspondence, and certainly appreciate you being here.
I'm Rick Fowler, honored to serve as the President of SCURS, which happens to be among one of the best retirement plans in California, because of my retirement board colleagues, a great staff, and you as responsible employers. Whether measuring service to retirees, funding level, expenses, or returns, SCURS excels. The county has been a responsible employer in our multi-employer plan, responsible with benefits promises, responsibly meeting its payment obligations in good times and bad, and responsible appointments to the Board of Retirement. I serve with nine members of a very diverse group of elected and appointed board members. They are dedicated, committed fiduciaries, several are here today. The issue before us is that we're in the process of recruiting a new CEO for SCURS. We lost us a Chief Investment Officer and a Chief Executive Officer for below-market pay. Their skills may not be fully replaceable in any one person with bottom-half market compensation. Additional contract help, it may be necessary to procure at higher cost. Other contract help may be required for other positions. So, we now face a critical hiring decision in a limited amount of time. We're fortunate to have one of the best recruiters doing a national search. We're fortunate to have the former CEO of another plan as interim CEO while we do the search, but we won't have her for very long. We're fortunate to have the opportunity to address CEO comp with no incumbent affected. We must hire the right talent to protect the county and its retirees for the next 10 to 20 years. We're here to seek your approval of a broad pay range that permits appropriate discretion to hire the right talent, and that means talent that may not be looking for a job or even in the market, but that our recruiter approaches. We want to permit setting the appropriate initial pay while having growth opportunity for success, as that person, who we don't even know yet, considers whether they're going to come take this big task on of running an $8 billion retirement system. We do not plan to pay at the top range, but we certainly need a range for attracting the right candidates and making sure that we have a successful recruitment. So, it's a unique exempt position, not funded by the county's general fund. My most important message to you is that you make a pay decision today, rather than harm SCURS recruiting effort with the delays suggested by staff. That was the non-action taken previously that drove away our previous CIO and CEO, and created higher costs for SCURS today. I'd like to now introduce to you the interim CEO of SCURS, Annette St. Urbain, who's the former CEO of the San Joaquin Retirement System. Annette?
Thank you, Rick. Good afternoon, Annette.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler, good afternoon, Chair Natoli and supervisors, it's a pleasure to meet you today. Again, as Mr. Fowler said, I want to assure you that I'm not a candidate for the CEO position of SCURS long-term, and I will not personally benefit from any decision you make today regarding the salary. My willingness to accept this assignment on an interim basis is primarily due to the quality of the SCURS board and its governance, and the outstanding executive management team currently in place at SCURS. As Mr. Fowler mentioned, prior to joining SCURS, I was the CEO for the San Joaquin County Employees Retirement Association, with $2.5 billion in assets, a little over 12,000 members, and about 20 staff. Yet, my compensation there was 20% higher than the current salary range for the CEO at SCURS, though the system itself, according to asset size, was just over a quarter, the size of SCURS. In the past two years, SCURS has lost its two most senior executives due to compensation levels well below market. The former Chief Investment Officer was nationally recognized for innovation in institutional investing, and our current, the most recent CEO left for an increase of 25% in base salary and a lower cost of living area of the country. SCURS is a well-funded, effectively-run retirement system, because of your strong leadership in setting the terms of the pension benefits, the dedication, commitment, and sound decision-making of the elected and appointed retirement board members, who set SCURS policies, and the effective leadership of managers and the staff who implement those policies in investing plan assets and administering the benefits. I'm working diligently to be a good steward of all that SCURS has achieved, and to help SCURS move forward on important strategic initiatives until the new CEO is on board. Both SCURS and the county should desire, and I believe the plan participants expect and deserve, that the SCURS board have the tools it needs to attract and retain top talent at all levels of the SCURS management team. SCURS is governed by the county employees' retirement law, as you know, and it has a unique status in the county that requires the appointed and elected members of the board to bear the fiduciary responsibility and to manage the system to protect and continue to grow its assets. SCURS decision on the proposed CEO salary range was carefully and unanimously made by the retirement board, based on extensive research, real data, and the input of experienced professionals in this specialized area of recruitment. So, on behalf of the Board of Retirement, Mr. Fowler and I respectfully request that you affirm the retirement board's decision regarding the CEO salary for this recruitment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Annette. I have a question from Mr. Gill, the recommendation then, from the county executive, is to send this back, and yet the ranges are not significantly different, I mean, the upper range on what at least personnel, and I guess assume your office has looked at, was about at the 230, they recommend the upper maximum salary at 253, and with the, I guess, the minimum, you know, 181 for recruitment purposes. And it sounded like that there was concurrence with the Ralph Anderson Associates, you know, comparison, using the seven agencies as the market comparison and so forth, it just didn't fit neatly in the 50% of medium, but again, I think to the point that Annette made, and Mr. Fowler, both have made, and the retirement board, I assume, has talked about this as well, is relative to the compensation, and this is actually the dollar compensation, it has nothing to do with any of the benefit packages, is that correct?
That is correct. Our recommendation, and our personnel directors here, the salary range is what salary range is, is the difference between the 50th and the 70th percentile. And the explanation given on that is to attract somebody because of lower retirement tier is the additional 20% in there. If SCURS wants to, the board, SCURS board wants to hire somebody with that salary range, we do not have a problem with it, it's just the 50th to the 70th is what our issue was to have more dialogue, understand sensitivity, they need to get somebody in, and that was our process today, reason it's timed is to have this discussion, and see if there's any appetite, not to go at 70, but go at 50, but from the county exec side, from us to come back and say that we have to pay more from the 50th to the 70th percentile because the retirement tier is lower, you can imagine what kind of issues that creates.
Right, but that's what was being said here, you're disconnecting those, the compensation would be...
It's in the report that that's one of the rationale that was used, and that's why we made the recommendation. If they want to hire somebody, that's their decision, we don't, that's not what we're trying to get at.
No, I know, but, but, but I think to your point about, you know, what was used as a rationale, but if we just, if we determined that from a competitive marketplace relative salary, irrespective of the benefit package, I mean, because obviously it is a package, and people will look at that, including where they live, cost of living, and so forth, so if we were to give a direction based upon the compensation package, just the salary versus anything tied to retirement, or medical, or anything else, then that's a cleaner path, is that right now? Is that...
Yeah.
Yeah, but your recommendation, at least in part, your analysis was because it was tied back to, at least in the rationale you received to the...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I guess I just, I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with staff on this one. I think that this, and I understand your rationale, I completely, actually appreciate your position in some ways, because what you're doing is you're protecting us through consistency, and that's important for the various reasons that you alluded to. This is a very, very unique position in my mind to the county, and one in which it's, you know, it's in thousands of people's best interest that we get the very best, and we make recruiting as easy as possible to get the very best. So, I personally, and I'd be, you know, open, I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say, I, on this one, don't mind deviating from the norm, because it's not a normal position, in my mind, in a lot of ways, and requires a significant level of expertise that frankly, in that field, you got to pay for it.
All right, other board members? Ms. Peters?
Yes, so the current, the former executive was earning how much?
199,000.
199, and that was at the top of the range at that point?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, you're asking for an increased range?
Yes, the board is broadening its range, because again, we're doing a national search, and...
I understand that, okay. So, was that 199 in the 50th percentile that we usually do? I don't, I don't know.
It's certainly within the range the board is proposing, I don't think it, I'm not sure.
I'm asking a more technical question, sorry.
Yeah.
Good afternoon, Dave. Divine Director of Personnel Services, I wasn't here when the retirement salary was set, but I was assumed, because the county's practice has been to set at the median to 50th percentile. Also, this position receives, earn part of our payroll, and they receive the same cost of living adjustments as all other county employees.
Okay, so I didn't quite follow you, if it's in the 50% percentile range right now, why isn't, why, why was he not given additional raise within the, within the range?
He was at the top step at the range, at the 199, which was probably when the salary was set, it was probably set at the median, going way back.
12 years ago.
The way this goes is that whatever step that was chosen, most likely is at the 50th percentile, then each year, with COLAs, and if there's pay increases, employees go through a step process, then they get to the maximum.
Right.
And what I think the interim executive's saying is that, that individual was maxed out at 199, the new proposal that they have is from 181 to 253, so they're expanding it, and that's the difference between the old and the new one on this one.
And I would respectfully note this position, has it been reviewed, the compensation?
I'm sorry, we're talking to staff right now, thank you.
Standby.
You can have a seat while we discuss this. Great, thank you so much. So, David, the range is set by the percentile ranges when you start the position, not...
Well, initially, I'm sorry, when initially, when the salary was set, it was probably set somewhere in the marketplace to the 50th percentile in the market, just like the same process they're doing now in establishing the salary at the 70th percentile. And over the course of time, with cost of living adjustments, the range has changed, and also how someone progresses through the range to the top step, the maximum.
Just a piece of information I didn't have, so, or wasn't aware of. So, how would changing the percentile, how would, if at all, would it change any negotiations here at the county?
Well, we've been kind of toeing the line at the labor market median, there's been a lot of pressure for us to waiver off that, and that is something that we've held steadfast, in fact, the board in the unrepresented pay plan was... In fact, the Board, in the unrepresented pay plan, was passed in 2001, adopted the median as the standard.
Okay. And then, okay. Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Supervisor Frost?
So, what you're saying is that it's not so much the salary range or the amount, it's setting a new precedent that would create a problem moving forward for the county because it's our protocol or our policy to go at the 50% range. And the fact that they used, took into account the retirement tier as their rationale, that sets a different precedent and creates future problems for the county.
That's what we're concerned about, that we're deviating off our 50.
Can I just ask on that, again, if Supervisor Frost is done with a question, that, but you're setting for the executive director and again, you know, your retirement administrator, and, you know, you, certainly you have a whole profile within all the ranges and all the positions, you know, from entry level to top, you know, administrators in departments. But I guess it would be the same for CEO, for example. I mean, this Board makes a selection that we obviously, you look at market range, you want to be fair about it, but we have the, we have the discretion, this Board, in hiring, you know, to the position that you occupy. But I just think that, and it doesn't have to, I mean, this Board retains the discretion. Obviously, Retirement Board has come for this Board because it is a county employee. I get that. But I think it is rather unique. So, was there any consideration, I mean, when you look at that is that, you know, this is your administrator, you look at the market force, and also your recruitment, that trying to get...
Supervisor Natoli, again, we're not disputing the pay or what they did. Our concern is when you deviate off the 50 to 70, all of our positions, when we do the market, we look at the market and we give it a pay range, and that's what we go with. If that's what they think it ought to be, then that's what they got to pay for it. Our concern, again, I'm being redundant, being sensitive to it, is that if we go and start deviating, and I understand that this is unique and there's all reasons you can come up with, and I don't want to be flip about it, but there's other positions in our county that can make a very similar case, that they're specialized. That's what was done in 2001. That was Board policy is a 50%. If you want to deviate from this, that's absolutely in your prerogative to do. We felt compelled to at least let you know that if you do that, there are other positions, and we have hired on the 50th percentile for the last couple of years with a lower retirement rate, and we've, that's the concern that we have. It's not about their employee or SCURS. That's not what our concern is. Ours is more of a dialogue with you on the 50 to 70 jump and all the bargaining units and the questions that would be asked.
Well, and they're going to have to hire at the lower retirement rate. I mean, that's only prescribed in law going forward, but it certainly, you know, it goes back to, I think, even Rick's comments about, you know, prudent administration and certainly, you know, both in negotiating benefit packages, but also retirement packages as a part of that. And certainly, it ties very closely to obviously what the Retirement Board and Retirement Administrator are responsible for as spokes leave county service. But again, I don't think that's, you know, path we're going down, and I would hope that, you know, whatever comments are made that tie to that. But from the standpoint of being within the market range, whether it's 50, 70, or something else, I mean, it seems to me that if you're recruiting, you may have to look at something a little different here. But, okay, Ms. Peters?
My question to the county executive is, is there, or maybe it's to Mr. Devine, an opportunity to review the job description, and maybe the job is undervalued in the way of its job description, you know, within the machinations of personnel. I, you know, I'm not the expert on this, but I wonder if there is a way to push that into a different category?
Sure. We could take a look at the job itself and look at like consequence of error, judgment, complexity of the job, which are all compensable factors.
I mean, it's been 17 years since, I heard, 2001 or...
Well, that's from the pay plan, but I don't know when the last time...
The job was reviewed?
The job was reviewed. Because certain things could, may have changed since then. I mean, this is looking at strictly market data.
Certainly, the portfolio has gotten quite a lot larger, and we have more retirees now than we did then.
That could be a way to look at it.
I guess I would be interested in pursuing that and keeping it at the 50%, but taking a look at the job description and seeing if it fits in, is in the appropriate category at the moment.
Okay.
And I think it's important to move this forward today because the Board is in the middle of a review, not a review, but a recruitment, and I think us not making a decision today would really slow things down. So, I'd make that a motion.
Okay. There's a motion. Okay. And I have a question of Mr. Fowler before we vote, though we could just, Rick, to get some clarification regarding how this got tied back, recognizing what the motion is on the floor here, but...
Some clarification on what, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, clarification on, so was the communication to the exec's office that the reason you were going for a higher salary range because of the retirement tier? Because again, the sensitivity behind that is, as you well know...
No, that was just one of many considerations that went into it.
Okay.
And it could mean that many qualified people running retirement plans that are smaller in other parts of the state wouldn't come here because it would be a downgrade for them in that important area. We simply recognize that, but we're doing a national search looking for talent that's not in the bottom half of the market and that isn't even looking for a job, but that we would approach with a package and attract them to Sacramento for all the reasons that we all like to live in Sacramento. I would say, though, to Supervisor Peters' suggestion, that we picked the most conservative, lowest tier in that Anderson study. If you just go from the seven lowest that we took, because we, we're not, we won't spend a lot of money. We run an efficient plan, and our proposal is designed to save the county money, not pay more. We believe that, you know, the wrong CEO will cost the county a lot more than...
I trust you won't hire the wrong CEO, Rick.
So, if we went to the 12 from the seven peers, you close a lot of the salary gap right there, and we still haven't brought in the stress that any of our CEOs would get from the fact that CalSTRS and CalPERS are here in town with much larger salaries.
Well, they're paying a lot more and they're not doing as well either.
No, they're not.
I'm not sure salary makes a difference in that sense.
Yeah. So, but my point is, you could certainly find a way to get to what we believe would be an appropriate dollar salary by taking a different peer group. But again, we went with the most conservative. We think it's fully justified. And as I assured you, we do not plan to recruit a person at the top of that range, but we believe we have to show them that if they come here, there is room for them to grow over the next 10 or 20 years, because if they look back at our history, they will see that we held as CEOs pay, you know, basically, other than cost of living for 12 years and way below market. And so, that's a fact we can't change for any candidate that looks at how this county relationship is for funding that position, and they would have to consider that soberly before they made a decision to move their family here and take this on. So, we want to show that there's upside and actually not just recruit the right person, but retain him or her.
Okay.
Which is by reviewing the position, as I suggested, would be a positive note in your recruitment efforts.
Okay. All right. We have a motion second by Supervisor Frost.
Hi. I just have a question. If we review the position, stay in the 50% range, does that address the sensitivity around the retirement? Does that take away that...
Yes, it does. At least from our, yes.
Okay. And will they come back, or where do we go from here?
We'd like to have the flexibility, since they're in the middle of a recruitment, that if we can get a, get the review done quickly or whatever agreement we have with them, if you can delegate that to us to work it out with the SCURS Board.
Okay.
And would that allow you then to go to 253? You want that delegated authority to within the salary range? Depending on the duties, you could make adjustments up to amount within the...
If the Board feels comfortable giving me that kind of authority, I'm comfortable.
I think that's getting the horse ahead of the cart.
That's where you want it.
Or behind it.
That is, yes.
That's generally where you would want it, wouldn't it? Before the cart.
I would be supportive of that because, and I just say, I understand the motions on the floor, which is the 230 cap, but to review the position and what you just said in responding to Supervisor Frost, though, is that recognizing recruitment, you're going to do this quickly. It just wouldn't be a...
But it might find out it's worth more.
Well, yeah, but so they could come back to us. I'm saying you give to the authority up to what the Retirement Board recommended, which was the 253. If it is more, then we're going to, you're going to have to come back for additional authority on that.
Yeah.
But we give you the authority between the 230 and the 253 to make the adjustment? I'm prepared to do that.
I think it's, it's an important position, and you could spend a lot more by not having the right person. And so, I would concur that I could support it.
So, I would, again, I would offer an amendment to the motion that would, in addition to the review and to taking the current action, the 50% of median to 230 cap, to allow you to do a very, you know, quick, a quick but thorough review and to authorize you to take it up to 253 if that's what your findings were.
With the caveat that I report, I'll do some kind of communication back to the Board.
Can I ask a question? So, what does that equate to in approximately in the amount of additional time to the whole process?
It's more conversation and look at the data that they have and the difference...
Give me, is it a week? Is it two weeks? Is it two days?
I'd like to get it done within a week.
Okay.
We do have Board meetings next week.
So, you can bring it back to the Board if you want. I mean, we've got another, you know, we've got three meetings next week, so...
Yeah.
So, no more than a week?
More than a week.
Okay, so, yeah.
I'm hearing yes from...
Okay.
And if I run into trouble...
I guess I still say, I don't want the amount in there because I think he could come back with more. I don't want you to feel constrained by that.
Well, then why don't you just bring this back to us in a week?
Since it's coming back so quickly, yeah.
Yeah. So, all right. So, I think in general direction, we had offered, we had a motion on the floor. So, you want to, you want to withdraw or just...
That we move forward with the, we do not send it back to SCURS, and we approve the 50 percentile range for this position, and that you return to the Board with a consent item next week that may, in fact, change the position so it might qualify for a different salary range.
Okay. All right. So, all right. So, that's the motion. Do you have a second on that? Okay, a second. Okay. All right. So, we're back to the week, understanding the motion. Anyone else wish to speak to this? All right. Seeing none, please vote. Okay. We're back here in a week with maybe some further adjustments. All right. Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Annette. Thank you. And thanks, Martha, and our folks from the other Board members up there. Okay, we have one other item for the morning agenda.
Item 47, Property and Business Improvement Districts Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Agreements with Owners' Associations.
Okay. Ms. Davison?
Yeah. Good afternoon. Bob Davison, the Division Chief of the County Engineering Division. On two weeks ago, on May 23rd, staff presented a Property and Business Improvement District Cost Recovery Plan in the form of an agreement that's required by law to be entered into with P-Bid Owner Associations. Of course, at that time, the Board did not approve the Cost Recovery Plan and directed staff return with the agreement with the components of the Cost Recovery Plan removed. So, before you today is essentially the same agreement with those components removed, and the recommendation is that you adopt the Resolution Authorizing the Execution of Agreements with P-Bid Owners' Associations, and that would authorize a Deputy County Executive to enter into those agreements with each of those associations.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Thanks for your work a couple of weeks ago and for bringing it back quickly. So, any...
Approve staff recommendations.
Okay. Second by Supervisor Frost. Okay. Move a second to approve a staff recommendation. Nothing further. Anyone wish to address this item? All right. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Mr. Tardigan, were you wishing to address the Board off agenda? No? Okay. Good. All right. Jeff, thanks. Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay. All right. That concludes the morning agenda, correct?
Yes.
All right. So, but we're in the afternoon, so we got a closed session, and we will return at 2:00. All right. So, we will go into a closed session and return here tomorrow.